Join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, for nation under one law, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
What? A roll call. Commissioner Chang.
Okay, Commissioner Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Zuman.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
And Commissioner Calvinsen.
Present. All right. And we'll move to adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes? Oh, wait a second. Let me start this recording.
The backup.
The backup recording. I have to turn around first. Sorry for the delay here.
You just do it on video, that's all.
All right, we're good. Okay, backup is on. So, any changes to the agenda?
Move adoption of the agenda.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Moore and supported by Commissioner Hyde to adopt the agenda as posted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Communications and correspondence. Did want to say, I did email and it was, it didn't get uploaded, but a summary of the action items for the ASCAP plan. It's nothing that isn't in the plan, but I will have them added to that agenda item.
I didn't notice. It didn't have all of the subgroups.
It didn't. Which one was it? You can ask me, or even, we can get to it when we, maybe something didn't happen. All right. Any other communications or correspondence? Welcome, Commissioner Reiser.
Hello.
Join us at 7:02. All right. Okay, with that, we'll move on to, we have no presentations, and we'll move on to public comment. People wishing to address the Planning Commission on matters which are not on the public hearing portion. So that would be either of the conditional uses of the Curtis Commercial mixed-use drive-through and the Slim Chicken mixed-use drive-through. So any, any items that are not on those two public hearings. Such oral presentation shall be limited to three minutes, except a representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the commission. So with that, I'll open the public hearing at 7:03. Please, if, yeah, please come forward. Okay. Yeah, and if you could sign in under the public comment portion and introduce yourself.
My name's Pat Stein. I'm a Sciopancho resident for most of my life and also a Myers shopper since it first opened its doors in Sciopancho. I came tonight to personally thank the five of you who denied the petition for Best Friends Pet Care to have a facility or a, a compaya suite within the Myers store. It was greatly appreciated. I know, you know, we've been making, myself and fellow residents have been making public comments since this petition was first presented by Mr. Moreau months ago. And I appreciate that you listened and that you initiated the motion to deny Commissioner Reiser. So... I hate to admit it, but I'm also in attendance tonight with hopes that the representatives for the Slim Chicken was providing samples. But, no, I, I do appreciate. A lot of us are on Zoom. We watch these meetings, we read your agendas, we follow, follow up with public comments. But at this point, I wanted to appear in person and thank you personally. Thank you very much.
Especially there's some good news.
Thank you. Sorry, what did you say?
I said it's nice to hear some good news.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anyone else present in the township hall that would like to address the Planning Commission? All right, we'll move to our public online.
We have one hand up right now that is Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen Brandt, do you have a vote?
Good evening, planning commissioners. This is Kathleen Brandt, Sciopan resident. I just wanted to point out that on the Sciopan webpage for the Planning Commission, there are no meeting minutes going back to May 22 of this year. If you could correct that, it would be great, because I do access those. Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you for flagging that for us.
Is it June 22nd?
May.
Any other public comment?
There are little other virtual panels.
Close, close public comment. We don't have to, but we traditionally do it this form.
Yeah, that's fine. You move, yes. Commissioner Hume?
Sure, yes.
Is there support? Commissioner Hyde? All right, yes. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? I'd just like to, just in case someone wants to extend it for some reason. All right, we're moving on to our public hearings. And we have two public hearings tonight. And I'll just kind of go briefly over the way that we conduct public hearings, so you know what to expect. So we open the public hearing, and then we ask the applicant to provide a presentation. The commissioners may ask questions of fact. And then we move to our consultants, planning and engineering. Conditional use is usually, engineering does not weigh in. And then we move to our public first in township hall and public online. So with that, I just want to remind people that it's similar with three minutes for an individual and five minutes for an organization. So with that, I'll invite Curtis Commercial up and open the public hearing. Or CU number 23009, Curtis Commercial mixed-use drive-through restaurant at 7:08. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good morning. So I'm Joe Mayen with Washington Engineering with today's Jim Curtis, Curtis Commercial. We're here to present the conditional use request for the previous Panera Bread building. As I'm sure you're all aware, Panera Bread did relocate to the Myers parking lot. And what we're proposing here is kind of in line with what most restaurants are moving forward with. I think Doug, you put the site plan up there. Just want to go over a few points. Kind of see that, but the existing building is, is pretty much going to stay the way it is. We've got some minor exterior improvements. The idea here, the conditional use, is to install the drive-through. As part of this project, we did look at a couple options for the drive-through. Normal consideration, we put the drive-through kind of in the front. And after much discussion and consideration, we decided to go ahead and put it in the rear of the building. Creates a situation where you drive in off of Jackson Road, the back of the parking lot, and you would head east, where then you would enter the drive-through lane. I know one of the comments in Carlisle Orman's letter, and I'll probably do some clarification on Doug when we get to this. We listed at 10 and a half feet, but that's the asphalt pavement edge-to-edge. You actually go to the back of the curb, which is the full width, the roadway. We've got about 13 and a half feet for that width. So we can, we're more than welcome, more than adequate to slide that island that we have there. An extra two feet, we've got plenty of space without impacting our impervious surface. So...
Is there the island right there, sir?
Yes, yeah. So that whole island, right now, like I said, it's 10 feet, 10 and a half foot, edge-to-metal, edge-to-metal. But you also have the gutter line, which also creates that additional foot and a half on either side of driving surface.
So if that's the drive-through, then that can't be Jackson Road to the right.
Right, and they come in and look around.
Yeah, so you come in Jackson Road to the right there, you drive all the way to the back. Yep, go straight to the back, keep going. There's a couple signs there directing people to get to the back, go around and up, enter into the drive-through, and come back through.
Always, okay, thank you.
And it's divided.
By the bank?
Yeah, you've got banks on either side, but yeah, there's one side, the bank's up there, and then I don't remember which bank is which.
Panera would be the one down below, or further west, west of the Panera.
Curve cuts are the same?
Yes, open to curve cuts.
Open to curve cuts, so you drive past the bank, parking, on your way to get some food.
Correct. This also helps limit car pedestrian crossings. We pretty much have one crossing, which we've proposed paint markings to help people notice that there is that, you know, crossing. One other note, the rear doors to that building are for employees only. So that second door that's further to the east is pretty much for employees leaving with, you know, trash to go out to the dumpster. Visitors and patrons will not use that doorway.
That's at the top left of the, the building, is that correct?
That is correct.
Door?
Door, yep.
Okay. That was my first hint.
So, yeah. So both rear doors are employee-only entrances. So the entrance for the western retail or restaurant space, or whatever it is.
Where it is for Panera now?
Yes, that's their main entrance. They'll have a second entrance, which is emergency exit only, which will go out front to a patio space, which is kind of what Panera uses now. And then further to the east, the drive-through portion of the project, we'll have a new door entered, pretty much similar to where that door is now. And then we'll also give them outdoor seating space at that location. Lighting, the existing parking lot, pretty much all the lights that are on the existing parking lot are staying. They're just being upgraded from the old halogen and high-pressure sodium lights. All the LED, we're only adding one new light fixture, which is going to be at the dumpster enclosure. It's the one spot, when we did the photometrics, it was kind of a dark spot. We felt it was important to get lit up for the employees. Other things to note, which Doug brought up in his review letter, I figure we'll get this out there for you now. Our operation.
Hours?
Hours, yep. Are going to be very similar to other restaurant uses in the area. I forget, what was Panera's hours?
I think they close at 11 o'clock.
So...
So like 7 to 11 kind of thing?
Depends. It could be less of a breakfast place like Panera has been. But the range would be not more than what Panera has now.
So do you have some sense of the kind of place it might go in? Or is that something you really can't disclose because you're negotiating?
We are doing neither. We, we have no one who has come forth at this point because they are interested in only a drive-through.
So you're, you're doing this because you need to make it more marketable and a lot of people drive through.
And to get a better tenant, correct.
Okay.
That's the key. Because as it stands right now, it'd be very difficult.
So 7 to 11?
I mean, you didn't say. I, I would say the range would be similar to what Panera has right now. And as far as employees, I know that was raised as well. We can't give you that answer because we don't know the restaurant or the use of it. But given the building not being any larger than it is right now, I can't imagine. The number of people employed would be different than what Panera has presently.
So is, is it likely to be a fast food type restaurant? Or is that, is that a pejorative state?
Hard to say.
Well, it's going to be marijuana dispensary? It's got to be something, right?
Well, it's interesting that the relationship we have with the, the bank is that as long as we have food, they can't have food usages. But we have limitations to how we can use it. And as a nearly 50-year landlord, we're very sensitive to make sure that what we bring in is going to be acceptable to not only the tenants next door to us, or the building owners next door to us, but also the community. We love this area. We just want to be able to market the space.
So you're the building owner, not the landlord, right?
We're both, the building owner and the landlord. We own the building and we manage the property.
And you got to shop it for a tenant, you'll get a better tenant, more flexibility, more options if you have a drive-through.
I would say the only way we can have options would be to have a drive-through.
As restaurants go, as fast food goes, is this a pretty small footprint, or is this a typical footprint?
For a drive-through?
Or for a restaurant, for a fast food?
Well, it's hard to say. In we, in our fleet of tenants that read from us, we have a sit-down restaurant like Real Seafood. We've had coffee shops, fast food restaurants. And to answer that question would be very hard. Today, the sense that we have is that people want drive-throughs, they want smaller spaces. Whether or not this is too big or it being smaller, I, I don't know the answer. I do think it'd be, I know it'll be more marketable to be able to bring in the best tenant possible if there is a drive-through. But the market is only dictated by whoever comes in and repeats that process.
So in addition to restaurants, like a fast food, who else has drive-throughs? I think Walgreens, drugstores have drive-throughs, banks have drive-throughs. Is there some sort of industry that you might also reach out to that would be a possible use at that location, other than food?
We would seek out only food. And the rationale behind that is that if we have food, then the banks on either side of us cannot. And given that banking, and I'm not trying to be philosophical here, but banking is more electronic today rather than going to the site and making a deposit or withdrawing money or even getting a mortgage. So more and more, it's an online function, and the intensity of the use of the banks has diminished even over the last 20 years. So we, we are of a strong belief that by it being food, and the banks are not permitted to have that, that we're not going to have it over an indulged area like you might have with the new Panera location right next to Starbucks. So our, our hope is that to only attract food, that is our, where we're directing our energies.
So, correct me, maybe I don't understand banking as much, but how would a bank have food? Or would the owner just say, okay, bank, we want to use this for food, now you got to go somewhere else?
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
You're talking about if you have food, the banks can't. Were they planning, were the banks planning on having a buffet now or something? I don't get it.
Is this an agreement that you have? Well, we do. We have, as part of the, in perpetuity, our, our agreement. We cannot do banking in our location.
Some sort of covenant that you don't want to compete with each other?
It's reciprocal.
You don't do banking, get out of food.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. But we would, we would definitely seek out a food use. It, it is the best, I think, and highest best use of that location.
You see page, you saw page six of Carlisle Orman's? Because they talk about proposed business hours, unique sewer water needs, I would take it. It'd be pretty similar to what you have there now?
Water use?
Water and sewer?
Oh, yes, it would be very similar.
Not appreciably different.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the gentle prodding by Commissioner Hyde. I yield.
Any other questions of that that were, that commissioners have for the applicant?
Well, just what were you doing, Mr. Joe?
Oh, well, I was just going to go over a couple other things.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
I wanted to beat it to death a few items in Doug's letter. So deliveries, the intent was, and with most food industries, deliveries are done prior to the store opening. So you've got full access to the drive-through lane, or the drive-through lane, next to the drive-through lane for deliveries to come in, where it won't impede with pedestrians and use. And one item we'd like to talk about when we get to it is the lighting. With the shared use between the bank and this building, a lot of the lights that we have on our property kind of eliminate their property as well. So it's hard to maintain that 0.3 foot handles and not go over that shared-use driveway. So we'd like to discuss that further when we get to that point. And I think we handled the competitive nature of... I think that's got to leave a little question and answer. More, I was just trying to give you the background.
On the lighting, is it, is it a trade-off between safety and nuisance? Safety for your patrons versus nuisance to shining and disrupting their use?
It's not really disrupting their use. It's eliminating the center lane that comes through there. The lights are on our property that are highlighting that drive-through lane, that shared-use lane. So...
I have a question. Will this be coming back for site plan approval? This is our... Okay, thank you. It was a no.
There was a no?
It was a no.
It's not coming back. It's, it's a fait accompli if it gets passed tonight?
Well, it goes to...
We're not approving any site plan tonight. Because there's nothing before us regarding a site plan?
There's a site plan.
There is, but it's just the conditional use. Maybe we'll wait for them to finish and then we'll make sure we understand the process. Yes. Okay. Yes.
And then I guess the last thing, just to kind of cover is, you know, we've got a full landscape plan as far as plantings go. I don't think there was any comments on that, but just want to bring it to your attention. You know, we are adding required plantings throughout the project and in some cases, a little bit more than what was required. So I'm happy to go over that later as well.
And how are you addressing the stormwater they added, impervious surfaces?
We are not adding any additional impervious surface. We're actually reducing the impervious surface on this project. Industry-wide, this type of industry doesn't have as much property as necessary. So we're able to actually reduce the amount of impervious surface.
Property met, and did the stormwater management for the previous tenant, was it already met and evaluated before, you know?
They're not changing, they're not revising it.
What criteria, what criteria was it approved under?
Are we assuming that it's not the current criteria yet? Which wall is going away?
I heard that.
We should probably wait for the government.
So can I ask how you're getting rid of impervious? Are you taking some Prokynaut, or what are you doing to accomplish that?
Yeah, so if you look at the plan.
This is the gap, what's the before?
Yeah, so the before, if we just look back through.
Shows them taking out.
Page C3 shows all of the removal. So there's parking spaces, where that drive-through lane was. There's parking spaces through there. All those were converted through to the drive-through lane and all along the back of the building. So a lot of that back of the building was able to be reduced and opened up, especially with the drive-through lane exits, that's a big grass island now, planting island. Let me try something, you know, it's like...
And then, do we ask Doug about like the fire truck and that, you know, the rad, rad I? Like the turning rad I, is that something we don't worry about at this juncture? That's something that...
You got a fire memo saying it's updated.
Okay, yep.
Objections? There was some issue about...
Oh, whether they could, whether they could, they couldn't see it on Zoom?
Can they see it now?
Will someone raise your hand if you can see it on Zoom now, please?
I thought it, I thought it was...
So while you're looking at the, I have a question. It's your expectation that, oh, for the, it's okay if I ask a question. It's okay. I'm trying to square with one restaurant, one set of sanitary REUs and usage of water versus two restaurants. My understanding, you're planning for two restaurants. I know you say they're going to be smaller because there's no addition to the building, right? So, but you are going to have extended patio, is that it?
Yeah, so the restaurant to the east will have a, a new patio built, so there's exterior use. And if the building were to be separated into two, two uses, with architectural drawings show, we do have a second sanitary line that is proposed for the second fill, the second unit. So it'll have its own independent sanitary line. We can also split the water line inside the building into two uses.
I know, but what, what I'm saying is, is like you get so many REUs with the property. And if you wanted to go beyond that, that would be a cost. So, and you're going from one restaurant to two restaurants. So I'm wondering if you've considered or done any planning or put any thought into whether or not the two restaurants would require more sanitary provision in water provision.
Our objective will be to try to lease it out as-is, the size of it, without dividing it. The only thing that we would do, we'd like to do is, even if it's one tenant, is to bring in a separate split water line, sewage line.
So let, so let me just explain why I'm asking this question. We have a contract with the City of Ann Arbor for so many gallons of each.
REUs.
Okay, water and, and REUs. So right now, you have a restaurant that's been there for a while, and they used a certain amount of water and waste REUs. And I'm wondering if you are anticipating going beyond what you've already been using because you're going, likely, or planning to have two different restaurants at that location? Because that may be over what you're using right now, and that may draw some cost for you. It may draw some problems for us that's exceeding our contract or whatever. So I'm just asking you if you've thought about that?
Yeah, and OHM in their review letter pointed out that this property actually only has 2.7 REUs assigned to it, which is probably pretty low for...
And yours was, I think your, your, your application had it higher for that property.
Really, yeah, based on the existing use, based on the number of seats. I, I estimated it would need 15 existing, and our proposed split use would be 18.
So have you been able to, Joe, have you been able to reconcile that with OMH?
I have not yet, no. As part of...
Right now, our consultants say you're at 2.7.
Right.
Now 15 or 14. So the question in my mind is, is it maybe something for you to consider along with the consultation with our consultants, is whether or not two restaurants, they go over that amount?
Right, but as part of the zoning compliance, any, any new tenant has to come back, and this is in OHM's letter, has to come back for that use. And then that use will be determined based on the restaurant that fills the space. So it's, wouldn't be part of our conditional use right now.
So that use will be determined on where we can supply to that property.
Right.
Truth to tell, yes. And, and we may have sufficient amount to cover any additional, if there is any additional. I'm just pointing that out to you.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, this is the first time, and the last time, we're going to be talking about water and waste is an important thing for us to consider with each project.
So how would two restaurants be? One would have a drive-in, the other wouldn't? Or would they share the drive? How does that work?
It would be the former. One would have the drive-through and the other one would not.
Like one's a little going, something, something smaller, more boutiquey, and then it's not, is prone to drive-through, whatever that is. The final question I had, we had to do with pedestrian safety. How are people going to park, wherever they park, if it's crowded? I, I hope you get a good place in there, and if it's crowded, they're going to be walking? Are they going to be trapesing over? Are they not going to use the, the crosswalks and the people are going to be driving through there? So we've got the intersect, intersection of, you know, vehicles and pedestrians. How, how do we safely accomplish that, given people's proclivities to make beelines towards doors?
Well, we've got one pedestrian... Well, we've got one pedestrian crossing. Um, which is pretty similar to most, you know, it's, it's barked.
That would be from the building to.
That's to the north side of the building.
Building, yeah, that's from the building to the handicap spaces.
Yep.
And where is that, Joe, up there?
These little mires across the street?
Yes, yep, that's a faded crosswalk. So you've got cars slowly exiting the drive through lanes, not like they're going.
Slowly exiting.
Yeah, well, they're not like, they're gonna be getting 30 miles an hour getting out of there. Um, just hope not, otherwise this figure accident happened.
Checking things in their passenger seat and paying rise a whole lot of attention.
Well, I mean, that's with any drive through. I mean, you look at the new Panera drive through that they have now, they've got the same situation. I think it's just, it's just the nature of drive throughs. You're always gonna have that crossing with any pedestrians. So it's kind of the expected. We limited it to one location. Um, so there's people walking in parking lots safely to either front door. Uh, we're not encouraging them to go to the east by only providing that to the employee entrance and not a walkway all the way around on the east side. So we're kind of, have very good go towards the front of the building and not walk through the drive through lane.
So the drive through restaurant is on the east. Correct? And you're expecting to have indoor dining and drive throughs.
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, so they would be, they would exit the front of the building, the south side and walk to the west side and around? Is that how they would?
So pedestrians on the east basically would be using the front parking spaces and walking in the front door. And then the other people would be going through the drive through. We're kind of assuming more people would be going through the drive through than going inside to sit down and eat. Um, where the other restaurant would be having more people coming in to sit down and pick up.
Would it be shared parking or only for one?
Shared, makes sense.
It could fill up fast and then everybody's gonna be parking in the back, right?
Which is why, well, one thing we did is the second door to the west entrance, it says egress only. That's an exit only. So that kind of helps direct people to kind of park towards the front, but then they go out that door to the patio space.
So, so Joe, on this map, is north to the left.
Oh.
North is this way.
Yeah.
North is, so north is down at the top, so north is to the left, correct?
Yes.
And the main door is the main door, if that's north, and the main door is to the west, is that correct?
That's the main door for the, for the.
On the west side, correct?
Yeah.
At the bottom, and then to the south where it says egress door, are there entry doors or only going out?
Those two are exit only.
Okay.
Further off?
Yep.
Up the line, right, right where your finger is, that's the main front entrance.
Right there, right there. And then what is this?
That's the main entrance for the other one.
So I see, that's the front entrance for this restaurant?
Yep.
That people have to walk all the way around? And, and this is the front entrance for the smaller restaurant that you envisioned putting here, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So have you considered, considering that, you, we're just.
Okay.
Actually, I wanna get to our reports and then to public comment and then.
We, we're facts.
We have another.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just.
These are facts.
As long as you're underst, yeah, it's based on understanding.
I took some, may I just mention, I have some pictures that I took of the new Panera site. So next door to it, to the north is the Starbucks location. And the new Panera location has a double laned. Drive through pickup area where on the north side of their property, they have two crosswalks. One where the entrance way to the drive through is and the pickup lane are. So it's a double wide path. And then on the west side, northwest side, it's primarily, it appears that it's primarily used by the employees. To go to the garbage container, which is in the northwestern part of the parcel. And then there's the third one, uh, which is after the pickup window. Uh, and that is the, the crosswalk, which is in the southeast quadrant. And uh. I don't know if you want these pictures to compare, just to see the, the difference of that, because.
I don't need the photos, I've seen it, I've been in there and it's a mess. It's a driver and a pedestrian.
The first two are Starbucks.
Okay, um, any other questions of that?
Have you had any interest in this property since Panera's left?
In regards to.
And placing a status quo tenant, yes, thanks.
Well, we have one serious tenant that we've rejected. Uh, I think we mentioned this to Doug when we met early on. Out of the blue, we had a car wash, National Car Wash Company approach us that wanted to tear down this beautiful building. At their expense and build another property, it'd be north and south. Uh, to have a, a car wash that would pay us considerable amount of money. And we rejected it because we think that even though it's a conditional use product, I think it'd be detrimental to this area. We have, in my opinion, a lot of car washes, I'm not against them, I get my car washed all the time. Uh, but I, I don't think it serves this area well. So that is the only serious respondent that we've had with extensive marketing that Margaret and David Curtis have, have taken upon themselves. Um, for the last year, because we knew that Panera would be leaving, they're an excellent tenant, they're terrific people. They're not leaving because of rent or the condition of the building or the location. It's that it's not with a drive through. So um, that, hopefully that answers your question.
All right, I want to hear your report, Doug.
Sorry for the folks at home, I thought I was sharing properly. I dragged the site plan over to the second screen and it was my understanding. If I need to share it. There we go, okay. So, as is mentioned, uh, this is a conditional use and, and we have a few factors of the conditional, related to conditional use section. Um, as outlined in page six of our review, a, a whole site plan review is not required. And this is a, this is the one and only time. But this will not be coming back as a full site plan. Our special land use or conditional land use standards indicate that. When you have a special land use, you call it a drive through, that's being a substitute. A full site plan review is not required. Uh, if the building, proposed building is not being expanded over 1,000 square feet, which is a building remaining. Or if the applicant is not adding additional parking, which in this case, they are not adding. So based on those factors, then we kind of kick it into full site plan approval. Uh, this is being reviewed strictly as a conditional use for South Township's zoning ordinance. And because of that, we, we reviewed this with a little more detail with regard to the site plan than we might normally do for special land use when we know it's coming back. And we looked at this a little closer. So I'll reiterate the items that the applicant has gone over, so they can obviously describe the situation uh, well. Some of the things we look at when we look at special land use is, you know, how it's going to affect the name and properties if at all. So we'd like to look at what's happening around the site with regard to land use and zoning. And if we look uh, north of the subject site, uh, is, it's I-94, so obviously not impacting anything with I-94. Plus the building is located closer to Jackson. So there really will be no impacts in that direction. South of the site is the Jackson Boulevard. Again, the busy road, not the nearest business to the south is quite a distance away from the site across the Jackson Boulevard. So then we look at the east of the site is the uh, U of M Credit Union. There's U of M Credit Union, and then west of the site is the Comerica Bank. Both of those are banks with drivers. We don't believe that this particular use would have any minor impacts on adjacent properties. Or be necessarily out, out of, especially the zoning of the site. We look at the master plan, try to look at the master plan and looking at conditional land uses. A change in master plan doesn't mean it's the subject site mixed use commercial. Mixed use commercial is supposed to be a mix of commercial, office, industrial, high density residential, and just. The various uses in this future land use category include general commercial uses, high density residential, more intensive commercial operations. Parts opens based conservation areas, office uses. Light industrial uses, so uh, you know, pretty much everything that zoning ordinance has. This uh, you know, we have to remember in the Jackson corridor, this is where we are proposing higher, higher intensity type uses. It's found within the master plan and so on. Uh, this property is within the Jackson Overly District, which allows for mixed use projects, which is the reason why we can consider this as a drive through in this particular case. Cause I'm relying on zoning too. If you've been to the site, the only natural resources on the site is the existing landscaping that's found in association with previous Panera site. Center facilities and services, the site, as was mentioned, is, is within the township's water service district. These connections will have to be reviewed um, by the township utility department. And then OHM is here as well, I'll. Bring on Stacy and the panelists that have been down here, perhaps she can discuss this in a little more detail. With regard to traffic access, again, looking at, when you have a special land use, you're trying to determine if the use will have an impact on subject site or the surrounding properties. So as was mentioned by one of the commissioners during your fact questions. The, the access points are not changing. So going to new driveways, this will be the existing traffic access on the site. With regard to the special land use standards, there are six special land use standards contained within the zoning ordinance. We find primarily those questions have been addressed by the applicant. And particularly, we, we looked at the fact that this has been used as a restaurant for a number of years. You understand that a drive through adds a, a different component to the restaurant use. But we have to recognize that this has, has been used very. I was talking to the applicant early in the process and I remember when Panera first opened. That being said, we're not, we're not necessarily at this point, but very visual land use, and we're looking at a restaurant. So we are interested and will be interested when this comes before us as a zoning compliance, uh, if it's approved by the township. And what are the uses proposed, where are the hours for operation, where are the, you know, how many employees, that sort of thing. There, the only thing that I would be really concerned with in that regard is if this would turn out to be. Uh, one of those drive through fast food restaurants that causes substantial havoc when it comes to um, loading spaces. Uh, there are a few out there and I think we know what they are. Uh, that could be a problem. Although even in that case, if you remember the site plan, they're requiring the minimum required stacking spaces and if needed, additional vehicles could stack. Around back, there's area that they could continue to stack. Like I'll try to put this back up here. You can see my cursor up on the screen, so this is the stacking, eight spaces are required, they show 10. And if needed, additional vehicles could stack uh, along this northernly dry aisle. While still leaving the majority of the parking intact. So while they do show 10 stacking spaces, there in reality could be quite a few more if needed. But uh, the use in question could have an impact on, on parking, you know, stacking, things like that. That would be, that would be a concern and remains to be a concern. Perhaps the applicant can address that in a little more detail when I'm finished here. And on page six of our, excuse me, um, yeah, page six of our report, I talked about. First part of that section is the part that talks about we do not need site plan, full site plan approval, although, you know, in essence, reviewing the site plan that Dapkin is providing. We uh, note that based on the standards of the zoning ordinance, 63 parking spaces are required, that is proposed on 65. Inferior free numbers of parking spaces are. Have been provided with free. That one other issue, we don't see a loading area on the site typically, any kind of restaurants, when they have loading that occurs. Sometimes that loading occurs off hours. I know some of the fast food restaurants, um, they come there day and night to, to drop off material. So uh, perhaps Dapkin can address that in the, the track history and other aspects of the restaurants. So then they have a good answer to that request. We don't have any, again, our only issue with stacking, they have the required number of stacking spaces. Is the type of use that might lower that number. Do indicate that stacking space is supposed to be 12 feet wide. They're provising, proposing about a 10 and a half foot wide space with um, uh, curves on each side. I don't know that we've ever allowed that total cross section to be used. That's something I will have to look into in a little more detail, but even if we don't, they have space to widen that drive out a little bit. I think it's probably fine and in the name of reducing impervious surfaces, I would be okay with. The explanation that applicant's engineer provided this evening that it's back a curve, back a curve, they're getting actually over the 12 foot. Uh, with regard to site circulation, uh, the site as it stands isn't being changed except for the fact that they're adding. Uh, vehicular circulation around the back of the property is shown in the site plan. Uh, incidentally, the planning commissioner might be interested to know, I think some of the planning commissioners may have known this during our preparation meetings. But the initial um, drive through space was relocated, I believe on the west side of the existing building. And when we looked at that, there was, I think Chris actually was in it. It was determined that that, that just was not going to work at all because of the conflict with pedestrians and vehicles coming and going from the site. So um, Dapkin went back to drawing board, uh, came up with this version of the drive, uh, you know, the uh, drive through being on the north side of the building. And I think that works much better than the previous. Uh, we have no issue with the landscaping being proposed. Uh, this site has gone through a full site plan review when Panera went through and it's been a number of years. Our landscape standards have not changed uh, with regard to site landscaping since those days. And applicant mentioned the lighting issue, because this is a joint use driveway, if that is the only area that might exceeding the uh. Uh, our standard, I think because it is a joint use driveway, that would be acceptable. So I don't, I, I, I guess I, and I know there's elements of the site that are jointly uh, used and maintained between the two businesses, lighting may be one of them. Perhaps applicant can shed some detail on what's a light issue. And um, uh, this site isn't the J-Rod design guidelines or design standards. This thing, this thing, you know, Brad, meets those design standards. Um, but I'm not sure any business will want some changes. So we have a few issues to be addressed with regard to the special land use and the associated site plan. Uh, those are listed at page seven of our report. Over those again, just, just to be clear, um, they haven't been priced with additional information on the operation of the business or what they believe to be the operation of the business. Um, how loading will occur on site. Tacking and frequency of the vehicles to the site, that could address the loading issue if it's done late at night. Uh, provide us three bicycle parking spaces, I suppose were not provided, that maybe, that likely is a new standard since Panera went through. Talk about the dimensional standards, uh, 12 foot wide and 7, 10 and a half. I think that can be addressed as well. And um, applicant, our sixth item, there are doors. What is the north side of the building? And Dapkin has addressed in the early comments that those are employee-only or, you know, under the C doors. So we were concerned that those might be doors that pedestrians would use to enter and exit the building, but that does not appear to be the case. And again, reducing elimination levels along the western property. So we have a few cleanup items to occur. Generally speaking, the layout that they're proposing, we're not suggesting changes to that. And short of a few questions about use and scope of use, you know, based on adjacent properties, based on fact this is a Jackson Overly District, master plan calls for mixed uses. These items should be addressed that I mentioned, satisfaction planning commission, however, we may not. We would recommend at this point that the planning commission consider this as proposed.
Consider this what?
Consider the land use as proposed.
Thank you. We'll go to.
And Stacy's here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let me, I got that.
Can we ask questions, Mr.?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so just where you left off, reduce the elimination levels. I thought you just said that because it's a joint-use driveway, you don't have a problem with the spillover illumination.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the applicant a little bit more on that and to see if, to see if it is joint use.
It's joint use, but that's the only way the bank can get in there. Anyway, on number six of your memo, you talk about site circulation, yet you focus on vehicles, which is an important issue, but you also in your memo talk about the potential pedestrian issue. Do you think that some kind of, because as the, the vehicles are coming along the back, they gotta turn right, they gotta go past where the pedestrians are coming out to get to, coming out of, well, that restaurant at least, those folks have to come out of that west entrance to get to their parking. Do you think some kind of short fence along the, that's a, is it configured right now? You do step up when you go to the old Panera to get to that entrance, you can step up on pedestrian walkway. So that's there already and I wonder to, I don't know, maybe that would help pedestrians that are aware.
I can address that for you. What we did is, we did actually reconfigure this parking lot a little bit, but we also added bumper blocks to every one of those spaces there. So the cars have that, we can't put a curb there because the grading just doesn't work. But we did put the bumper blocks in there to stop the cars going too far forward, so.
Black on the sidewalk, can we?
Yeah, so you've got your car stop blocks out in the parking bay.
So in your memo, Doug, you say concerned with the potential pedestrian slash vehicle conflicts due to proposed site configuration. That's the issue that's been raised by me tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, I was more concerned about the rear, the rear, the northern access doors. And Dapkin explained that those are not for patrons to the business.
Okay.
Those are employee or, you know, trash wheelers.
Okay, and I have one more question. Mixed, this is referred to as mixed use. Is it mixed use because there could be two restaurants in there?
I mean, that.
Because it's not mixed use, because there's one restaurant there, right?
Yeah, it could, I mean, that could be. And actually, Dapkin and I had discussion about the uses that, you know, if they had, they have two uses in the building to make it mixed use. But that's not why we're calling it mixed use. We're calling it mixed use because the business next door, the bank, has a relationship to this site through some shared access easements. And in fact, when the site plans came, when the site plan came to us, it came to us as a single site plan.
Oh.
So this has always been a mixed use, the mixed parking, the mixed access, apparently the mixed lighting. And so this is a joint, you know, there's, if there's ever a mixed use, it's the bank in the store. Sure, they sure drive me up, a sure pedestrian to a certain degree. So that's what I was looking at.
So when they came originally, there were two separate developers, there were two separate parcels, but there was going to be this shared interest?
Yeah, and, and sure, I can look it up, but I'm fairly certain that this came as a single site plan. But the bank, I wanted to add. So.
Commissioner Hyde, that's the, that's next.
No, no question.
On that, no, I'm sorry. Being a mixed use and coming in as one site plan, is there a document or is there any agreement? Legal documents that define specifically? Like a PUD would have an agreement that would be in there. Is there anything that documents the shared driveway, the lighting is where I'm going with this?
I would have to look back.
I do have that.
And it's also listed on our plan.
We just need to know that there is a document that defines.
Would you like to take?
No, 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 no. I just wanted to make sure that there was a document that defined the shared use of the site.
There is.
And that would include the lighting, I would assume.
I don't know if it includes the lighting. I know it's the stormwater, the service road, and the reciprocal relationship of use, which creates that, that mixed use that Mr. Levine was talking about.
That means some of the issues I have with the lighting and other.
Yeah, on sheet C11 of our set, we also, we inserted the original stormwater maintenance plan that was done and it specifically calls out Panera Red slash Comerica Bank use right on, right on that, shows the whole thing as one application, one site plan. C11.
Before we get too far from mixed use, I would say this is a terrible definition of mixed use and I would like for us to properly define mixed use as a township because a mixed use should be something defining very different uses together, not two commercial uses that are incredibly similar. I mean, I'm not saying that you eat money or you invest in food, but just that there's not that big of a difference between a restaurant and a bank as opposed to like housing or an entertainment space or something like that. This seems like a really, we need a better definition of mixed use in this township. One that's more aligned to how people define mixed use everywhere else. I know it's not related to this project, I just, while we're talking about it, I don't like the definition.
It definitely should come up with our conversation later on.
All right.
I think this, and I don't disagree, we need a better definition, but the way that we're missing is current, we're missing this definition.
Yeah, because it would allow for show use and mixed commercial and other uses.
Again, whereas we had another question.
Question for either you, Doug, or the applicants. The deliveries, the loading. Doug, can we ask that like, can you go back to the main photo? Not the photo, the main drawing. And I assume that it's going to be more convenient for people to park toward the front and toward the side than in the back can walk through. And if there's openings, then they're going to park at the closest thing and open to the front door, right? So can we ask that staff and employees like park in the back, that they not take the good spots? The reason I say that is because they'll be walking, you know, before it's open and things like that. I'd rather have the patrons kind of get access to the better spots in the front inside where they don't have to cross the, 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 the drive-through. Is that something we can ask? Is that a condition we can insist on? Does that seem reasonable?
Very much so, is reasonable. And as a landlord, we've talked about this also with, with Joe and in our, in our group, it makes sense to have employee parking on the north part of the lot, the furthest away from the building. One of the reasons why we wanted to add more lighting to make it more secure in evening hours, but also eliminate, you know, employees from cannibalizing or using the best of parking they should go to clients. So that could be easily inserted in leases and I wouldn't have any issue with that.
And you, is it going to be one or two businesses or is that PUD depending on who you get?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is it going to be one or two restaurants there or two businesses or does that depend on who you get?
We would very much prefer to have one tenant. It has been a one-tenant building in the past. Our desire is to begin, commence marketing it as a one-tenant use. And if it is a one-tenant use, I do want to make a reminder, a comment here, instead of adding all the additional doors that we're proposing, which we're happy to do, there's already the doors that we need for refuse removal, entrance ways and aggressibility. But, 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 but our preference strongly is to have one tenant, but then also to have the drive-through function for that tenant.
Okay, now, look, like, are the delivery trucks going to have to be like semis, 18-wheelers kind of thing or like, can you go?
Can you bring up that picture again?
Where are the delivery trucks going to park when you got employees there, when you got people driving through, like how in the hell are you gonna, get a traffic cop out there and do this? And where are they gonna, where are they gonna take their food?
Panera does is they, they bring your truck and back it up right here. That's what they do in the morning before they open, okay? They go there early to see.
And for, I don't know, people, people can't see you pointing to it, but you're pointing to the lane that is just to the west of the, the, the parking spots. I mean, the, the queue.
These are islands and this is all, this is all open now.
Yep.
Here's the door that the one that go into right in here, the floor where the kitchen.
Why one, you mean the delivery folks or the?
Delivery folks, that there's a door right here where the kitchen for Panera is right here and also in here. So the truck backs up here and delivers in before they open.
And they have to go against that island?
No.
That grassy?
Between the island and right about here is quite a bit of distance.
Okay, but you're talking about after the island's put in though. Isn't this gonna?
The island's paved though.
Isn't it, is this, isn't this impervious, isn't that grass or something?
Well, that's being proposed.
Concrete. Concrete? Concrete? I thought it was impervious.
No, the idea, what this drive-through is, it's actually a mountable curb.
Okay.
Because technically you're supposed to have two lanes.
Okay.
So we put the mountable curb in, so somebody pulls in and they decide that they change their mind, because they drive over the mountable curb exit. But the mountable curb gives it a distinguished feature.
Okay.
That makes it clear where the drive-through lane is. Okay, and that mountable curb actually has a dropped sidewalk connection as well. So when deliveries are done, they can be wheeled straight in without having to go up over the mountable curbs.
So one of my concerns is safe loading, you know what I mean? And not safe for, with respect to the, the delivery people and employees who have to get it and it's not going to tie up things like that. So, and then hours of operation. So the hours might be depending if we get a Tim Hortons who sells coffee at seven in the morning or Taco Bell that wants to get the late shift or whatever the hell they are, you know, with the midnight. So the hours of operation, what do we say, 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM? Or is that ridiculous because that's too long? But at 6:00 AM, it's not too early for a coffee place and 12:00 PM is not too late, I guess 12:00 AM, what if, you know, almost midnight, is it too late for a fast food restaurant that's off at 94? So what kind of hours is workable for the range of restaurant that you want to attract?
Without defining the specific hours and it's tied into the deliveries that you're saying, our, our experience for decades with restaurateurs who rented from us is that they arrange their deliveries absent of when they are open to their customers and whether
Even at 1:00 AM or 5:00 AM?
Absolutely, they deliver whenever they have to deliver. These companies will do whatever a restaurateur will need. And so if there's an issue with deliveries and the conflict of a delivery truck and/or somebody taking food and beverages or materials off of a truck and carting it into a restaurant, it is generally speaking done off hours. That's why you don't see these trucks at Panera.
I agree.
You don't see them and there's a reason for that and.
So what, we, I think our, you know, our consultant is wanting us to include the hours and we should do that. So should it be as broad as possible to include all uses, should it be 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM?
I, I think that is reasonable. I, I think that, that, that makes sense to me. And without knowing who would be that tenant, it could be that someone in that range would not have the morning hours but would go to 12. Or it could be the opposite, someone could start at 6:00, like a Tim Hortons and, and earlier, maybe an hour. But I think that, that range that you suggested makes perfectly good sense and tying it into the number of employees, it, it really isn't going to be more than what you have right now in a very well-run Panera restaurant that has just vacated the premises there.
I'm sorry, what's the motivation in limiting the operation hours other than consultants?
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring up too. In, in certain areas of conditional use, the hours are important because it might come, it might be in a residential area or something. In this particular site, I don't see that the hours of operation are, they're, they're not going to impact any of the sites next door.
Like the bank isn't going to be upset that they're open at 10 at night?
I would agree, I would agree to that. I didn't want to.
You know, I would be pretty flexible, even, you might even get a, you know, a restaurant that wants to do 24/7 or something like that, except for.
I'm okay not setting course. I just, I just saw it on here as something that.
Does it not, you're a part of it?
Yeah.
But we would mention that the hours of operation can be open if we want it.
You mean 24 hours?
If we want it.
Or if you don't say anything, it's 24 hours.
Well, I'd rather say something in case there's a complaint about it and say, well, they're allowed to do the 24 hours. So it's, we considered it in a law, or didn't have a law.
Okay.
So is McDonald's open 24 hours?
There have been some of them that have been, but they've cut back hours since the pandemic.
Can't get employees.
Yeah, and they, yeah, right. Okay, any more questions of fact, because we should hear from OHM too. All right, is it Stacy?
Stacy.
Good evening, my report is actually pretty short for this site. So we recommended approval of the application in our letter dated June 21st and then we issued a revised letter on July 19th. We do not have any outstanding comments with the conditional use as proposed. Our revised letter was mostly in response to this project not coming back through the formal site plan process. And then we just clarified that any further future potential additions would get an administrative type review from our office just to make sure everything is still running as it should. And then we also noted the REUs like mentioned already tonight. The township records show 2.7, which is probably pretty low for this type of use, but we don't anticipate it being really a heavy REU, REU user, but that they likely will require more than that 2.7. So as the uses get determined in the future, that's when we'll request those to be approved by the BOT, but until then, we won't require anything at this time.
I didn't hear you ask any why, do they not wash their hands or?
We just wait for that to be a problem? I'm sorry, I'm asking a question, I'll ask it quickly.
Also, it's incremental increase.
It's a double.
Yeah, but, but we have, but we have.
2.7?
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's, yeah, sorry for making you that. No, no, but it's a valid point.
REUs up.
But I'm just wondering why.
Like our consultant did, yeah, right.
All right.
I do have a question for Ms. Monti. Good evening, Ms. Monti.
Good evening.
I want to just understand what you just said. Can I see Ms. Monti?
When she talks, sure, she pops up.
Oh, oh, I see, okay. Unlike me, I'm just on all the time. Okay, so as I understand your, your comments today, that our records show that this property is allocated 2.7 REUs.
Correct.
Okay. And you just said that they will likely need more REUs in the future. Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, typically restaurants will require a couple more than that. I don't have a number to really say because it kind of varies depending on what the use actually is. But my guess is that they would need more than that. Honestly, 15 is probably a little high. It might be about right, but it certainly will not really impact our remaining REUs. The ones that you want to keep in mind is those large subdivisions. Those are the ones that are going to eat up the remaining capacity, but projects like this. But projects like this, I mean, once you get enough of them, that's when it'll be a concern. But when it's just one by one, it's not really a concern yet.
Okay, all right, that makes, uh, sense to me. And then I have one other question for you. Have you looked at in your review, looked at the, um, the, um, circulation of the site?
Yeah, we did kind of a brief review of that. Um, just given that it is a conditional use, we didn't dig as much into our typical review as, uh, we normally do. But also kind of going off of what has been mentioned that they're not really changing a whole lot in terms of circulation. I mean, they are adding that drive-through obviously, but.
Well, that's a major change, don't you think?
It is. I agree.
Cause there's nothing back there now to hit a pedestrian. I mean, somebody could come out of a parking space and get a pedestrian.
Yeah.
This is constant traffic flow. Let's assume it'll be a successful restaurant. Okay, so you don't have any remarks on that. Um, have you been at the new Panera location? Have you seen that in its, uh, full?
Glory.
Glory?
I have only driven past it on Zeeb. I have not visited yet.
Oh, you should, you should just drive in there, park, walk, and you can, you can get a feel of it. Um, okay, and, and so I'll just ask you point blank. You have no concerns about the circulation issue that you've heard us raise tonight?
No, I don't. No, is the short answer.
Okay.
I mean, all projects, you're gonna have some level of concern, but at the same time, it, there's not, um, I guess, easy ways to address it necessarily. So we do not have concerns with what's being proposed.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde?
Yes, Stacy, did you say that this was, um, a six twenty-one letter? I mean, the date on it? Or did you, did you say it was revised? I didn't see a revision date, so either I misheard you or.
When Fran put the packet together, she included our original letter and I caught that today. So if you didn't look at the packet today, you probably did not see our revised letter.
You did not? So the revised letter, what was the difference?
We just clarified the REU, um, issue that any additional to the two point seven would need to be requested. And then if any future additional changes to the site plan happen, that we need to review it. But we don't, neither of our comments or neither of our letters have any comments in them. Uh, we're recommending in both of them.
Any other questions affect? All right, we'll move to our.
No, not affect.
Okay, we'll move to our public comment. Anyone, uh, in the township parliament would like to comment on, um, the Curtis commercial conditional use? Okay, move online.
We've got a few hands up. Uh, first one I see is Pam Boyd.
Thank you, Doug. Um, Doug, could you turn on your microphone? If Rob can help you with that. Um, you are not picked up on Zoom very well. And so my apologies if I bring up something that, um, has been well discussed. Could you also bring up the site plan? Um, so I have frequented Panera Bread, the old Panera Bread. And, and first off to the applicant, I really appreciate that you wanna keep this a restaurant. Um, I have a question as to why did you not take the drive-through, uh, to have the drive-through window on the east side of the building where you would take the traffic, um, to the, the east side of the building and then to the little-used driveway in front and then out to, uh, Jackson Road? You see, as a Comerica, uh, patron and a Panera patron, too many times, people don't look when they're backing up. And I'm assuming that the drive-through is going to increase traffic as, as it should, where people are not gonna park and they're gonna say, oh, this, I can do this quickly on my lunch break. And you'll, you'll have this, whatever businesses is, will have increased traffic. This, this dual, uh, back, a parking situation where people can back into each other, you're adding that additional traffic now to this very congested, what I would call, as a patron, a, a congested corridor, corridor. So I guess my main question is, um, is it possible to route the drive-through to the east and out the front, avoiding this, this congestion in the center? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a few other hands up. Uh, Kathleen Brandt, uh, you have.
Uh, good evening. It's Kathleen Brandt again. Um, I wanna echo some comments about the new Panera Bread location. I have been there and there's absolutely no place a person can park who wants to go into the restaurant that is not, um, impacted by drive-through traffic. I, I thought it was a crazy design. Um, if that's all we want is drive-throughs, then let's just take out all the parking and just put drive-throughs up and down Jackson Road. Obviously, I'm being sarcastic. Um, I don't think it meets a sustainability plan that the township is looking towards. Having multiple cars idling in a drive-through lane is, um, not improving the environment. This plan does the same thing. Um, especially if you say, oh, we could have more stacking. Which leads me to wonder, why does our township planning, planning consultant always approve every single plan that comes through here? I, I don't, I don't get that. Uh, some of these things are not in the, in the, um, interests of the master plan. Um, and we're not planning. Again, we're not planning. People are coming to, developers are coming to SIO and telling us what SIO should do. We're not planning. They're planning. We're approving their plans. Now, I wanna point out another thing. Um, I don't know this applicant, um, but I did go to their webpage and they're talking about this exact site. And they say on their webpage, drive-through restaurant potential. And I'm reading specifically from their materials on their website. This incredible parcel has now received the written go-ahead from the township to prepare a site plan for approval for a drive-through. So my question is, who's given them the approval for this? How can they market this? Because they are, they're marketing this already as a drive-through. So if someone could ask, answer the question, who gave them written approval for a drive-through? I, I really want to know who gave them the approval. I would appreciate an answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
More. Paula G., uh, you have a floor?
Yeah, good evening. Normally I think I would try to come tonight because I'm interested in the P U D discussions and I'll be listening. I have an illness. Anyway, I don't like drive-throughs. Just go over to Myers and look at what happens around eight till ten o'clock. Uh, I don't, you know, I don't like Starbucks, but you couldn't park there and try to back out. I actually got a gift certificate for somebody who does like Starbucks. But that's a mess over there. And you, uh, and that's, the new Panera's is a mess as well. And it's not a good situation off of residential areas to be having all these cars idling. Now, even Jimmy John's, why would you wanna try to park in there? People are actually parking in the Myers grocery outflow area. And, um, then they have to cross over that two, two-lane driveway, which is getting, which is much better in a situation as far as the traffic on Zeeb since they now have a light there, uh, to keep people from being injured or killed. But, um, you, you've just compounded the problem on Zeeb with the car wash and the Panera drive-through and all these drive-throughs. I'm very against, uh, more drive-throughs in the township. And, uh, I'm not really, haven't been really thrilled with Carlisle Wortman for a while. And the history of, of when they took these large, and I, I wanna congratulate, um, Commissioner Moore for bringing up the REU situation. This is a big issue. A lot of this development, whether it's be residential or others, is gonna affect the current residents living here as far as, uh, some kind of S A Ds for roads, um, uh, fire millages. And you're going to really, I think, by approving, and this is not a mixed use as Jeff Hume brought up, but I go, where is the plan for the future? What kind of businesses do you want to attract? And, and SIO has been reactive. And I have to tell you, I spent a year and a half of my life fighting, uh, the trustees and how it got through Planning Commission for what is now this Trail Woods or whatever, uh, which has caused a lot of issues. Uh, but the Board of Trustees, uh, Jim Dreese was, uh, a part of this, was to take people off of the sewer and, and neighborhoods to allow for increased density. And then they can give them P U D, uh, bonus densities. I have a real big issue with this bonus density and what the actual, there needs to be. I, I read through your P U D discussion and something needs to be addressed. Every time there's a P U D, every one of those, uh, things that, that are brought up in that agenda item. Excuse my, my voice. But I have to tell you, I don't see.
Excuse me, Paula, if you could finish up, please, um.
Yeah, I just finished up. I don't see planning going on.
Okay, thank you.
We've got a couple more. Uh, Rob Pattinson, uh, you have the floor.
You live in a good spot, Rob, didn't you?
Thanks, Rob.
Thanks. Thank you.
One more up. Uh, Jonathan, uh, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I think, uh, Kathleen Brandt raised a really good issue, uh, and, and at the end, a really good question. Who approved this?
Well, I think if, since it's come up a couple times, number one, it hasn't been approved. That's why it's here. Now, if they're marketing that there's a potential for it, there is a potential. But there's also a, a possibility that it wouldn't get approved. So that's, they're taking that risk on themselves and they haven't said that it exists. They say there's a potential for it. So it, it hasn't been approved. That's why they're here this evening and it will go to the Board of Trustees who ultimately have to approve the conditional use. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you for taking the time to respond.
Okay. Let's see here. Uh, Kathleen Brandt has raised her hand again. Are you holding your hand up? Go for it.
Sure.
Okay. Kathleen, you have, you have your floor.
Uh, Chair Culberson, I wanna read this again. This applicant says they have received the written go-ahead. So this is not potential. They are stating that they have the written go-ahead. So I'd like to know who gave them the written document? So I, I don't think it's fair for you to just dismiss that. Somehow they think they're good to go. Thanks.
I think you will ask them about that. Anything else? Anyone else?
There are no other virtual answers.
Right, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hume and supported by Commissioner Moore. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, we close, uh, public hearing at eight twenty-eight. So I'll just ask, do you wanna address the issue about the marketing?
I'd very much like to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'm the owner of the company, um, and we've been in communications with the township for about six months. We knew that there was a possibility for the, uh, property to be converted to a drive-through. And so we have been very careful in our advertising, not to imply that it was a guarantee, but to say that it was a possibility. Only to tell people who have called us about that, that we don't know until we know. And so the, for Kathleen and for Jonathan who have called in, and I appreciate your call, I want you to know that in no, in no instance have we ever expressed to any prospective contact that this was a go, nor have we ever been given an approval from the township by anybody. But our wording was carefully crafted to encourage people to respond to us and in our, in our hopes that when they did, that we would share with them the possibility of it being a drive-through. They are all awaiting to find out what's gonna happen. If nothing happens or if we're denied, that's the end of it. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you for addressing that.
You're welcome.
So commissioners. Commissioner Chang.
I do have a couple of questions. I, I was at the pre-application meeting with Mr. Curris and Mr. Maynard. Great to see you back. Um, a couple of things, I think it was brought up by Commissioner Moore. I think that drive-through where you're exiting, where it's going out to the parking lot, um, if it's a, a different material instead of painting it on the drive, if you use like a brick paver and erased it a little bit, I think that'll give drivers an awareness and putting some yellow bollards at each corner, that's gonna signify both to the traffic and to pedestrians. It's much safer to cross over. So that's just one thing that if this moves forward, um, you know, I think it'll make it a better pedestrian, uh, vehicular, um, circulation.
You, you're referring to the, the pathway where pedestrians walk from their cars to.
Yeah, that crosswalk should be a different material that should be raised slightly and then.
It's an issue with someone in a wheelchair or in a, with, uh, crutches.
It's, it's, what is, how, how wide is it? Five feet, six feet? How wide is the?
Five foot wide by about twenty-four foot.
It just has to be raised slightly, just a different material, something that's, I'm sure there's something out there that's ADA approved. It just has to be raised slightly, just a different material, something that's, I'm sure there's something out there that's ADA approved.
Seen past is people have done like colored stamped concrete.
Sure.
You can heat it up, you can heat up the asphalt, stamp it and then color it. And then that is an ADA safe path.
That's a good point.
Yep. And then in our meeting, as I recall, it was probably a couple of months ago at our pre-application meeting, I was more concerned with really the queuing of the cars. That was my biggest concern. That's why we changed where the, the drive through window was located. I still have those concerns. I know Mr. Lawan had mentioned, he won't mention it, but let's say it is McDonald's or it's a Chick-fil-A. Those cars are, they may stack right out in front of the bank and out into the street. And I think I asked, do we have a traffic impact statement? Something from a traffic engineer stating if it's that type of use, that it will not stack out into the street or what type of stacking pattern this will cause? That, that, that's really my, you know, the drive through doesn't bother me as much as I'd like to see a traffic engineer with a statement stating that any type of proposed drive through is going to be acceptable here. Or as I recall at that meeting, you were open to saying, we will prohibit those types of uses. I don't know if we can in the conditional use, say it will not be a Taco Bell, it will not be McDonald's, it will not be a Chick-fil-A. I don't know how many lists we have to go through, but you know, that was the other option. So I, I was hoping to get more of a traffic statement, you know, that was, is part of this package.
So may I, may I piggyback on that?
Sure.
So some like McDonald's will have you, you do your order and if that requires something special, they have a place, it's not much, but maybe you pull over, you get out of line so they can help keep cars moving through. I wonder if that's something that would be, I don't know if there's room for that configuration, but that's something you guys can think about.
Given that, given that there's a single window and my wife and I go to Florida often and you're speaking about Chick-fil-A's. And the tendency of those particular facilities are to have three bays of where you're checking out, not one. I think that, given the location, this is my own personal opinion on this, and I, I do agree with you, the location of it is far better than what our original proposal was, to have it on the east side of the building. That is the drive through. But my impression on this is that we're going to attract somebody who will accept a single bay window. And this would not, in the compliance or the needs of Chick-fil-A, ever meet their needs because they like the three bays. And if you've been in the South, you'll see where they continually have that kind of product. Our belief is that by putting this in, we're going to hopefully attract a good quality tenant, but somebody who would not rely solely on a drive through function. The other thing that, that is important is that I know that the code is eight stack is code as, as Mr. Lawan had mentioned to us, and we have a 10 stack drive through. But there's another 140 linear feet in the back area that going east to west that offers additional space if there is that need for it, which gives this particular site a significant amount of added space if in fact you need it. You take the, the new Panera location and the drive through starts in the northeastern quadrant of that building, right where the service road is going to the northern property, which now houses Jimmy John's and Starbucks. So when you compare the difference between these two products, it's a night and day. One having not only the, the distance that the new Panera has, which we would have as well distance wise in the drive through area, but an additional 140 feet of play area, if you will, if we need it. Out of the way in back of the building where, as was suggested, where parking of the employees would occur. So these are questions that are valid and we, I think, address them in order to protect the building from being abused and would cause a problem with our next door neighbors.
I think it's pretty telling that we're concerned that the proposed establishment might be too successful. That concern is because drive throughs are detrimental to our community. They just are. And only the ones that are not as successful have the least amount of impact. But before I get down what I would like to talk about, I'd like to pull a page out of Commissioner Trustee Rizer's playbook and review what could be there by right.
I have it too. Section 36 dash 74, brand 12.
Exactly. So we could have retail sales such as baked goods, groceries, produce and meat, hardware, drug, clothing, gifts, notions and beverages, personal services such as barber and beauty shops, tailor, watch and shoe repair, laundry and dry cleaning establishments and similar establishments, business, professional, medical and dental offices and medical, excuse me, emergency clinics, standard and carryout restaurants and establishments that serve alcohol, government buildings, small appliance repair such as radios, televisions, clocks, et cetera, large appliance and furniture sales, funeral homes, church, synagogue, cathedral, mosque, temple or similar building used for religious worship, subject to the provisions of another section, banks, credit unions, savings and loan associations. So that's what we could have without this conditional approval. None of that sounds terrible. I also sent a, an article from CNN to the, to the planning commission, I want to say at the end of last month, maybe the beginning of this one month. This is from CNN. I was, I shared it because I was thrilled honestly that this is a national trend that is not even, that you see on both sides of the political divide, that communities, municipalities, cities are trying to distance themselves from these types of car dependent infrastructure, sorry, establishments. And I, I have some quotes from that that I just wanted to say that magnets of traffic and congestion, drive throughs discourage walking, public transit use and visits to neighboring businesses. They also lead to accidents with pedestrians, cyclists and other cars and contradict the environmental and livability goals of many communities. Drive throughs don't support any of the life and vitality amenities that suggest people might want to come, live, work or play in a neighborhood. Ms. Brandt brought up the, the sustainability and idling, which was also a point I wanted to make, that I think it's the EPA says that if you idle for more than 30 seconds, you might as well just turn your car off and then back on. It would be better for the environment or I guess emissions. By having a drive through, we're saying, yes, we want more cars stacked here, idling, emitting more fossil fuels or carbon. And then again to Ms. Brandt and, and others' points that we're not planning and I, I think we really need to get our form based zoning in place for, for this area. And I would like to apologize to my fellow residents and the planning commission for not focusing on this form based J-Rod piece because it is the most important thing in SIO, I think. Those are all mine.
Are we making comments, Commissioners? Are we making?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner, hi.
So I wanted to hear from the applicant about the comment that was made by the public about bringing the, is there a possibility of changing the drive through to loop around and come out the east side and then across the front of the building to exit?
Is that coming from them?
Come in the west side, go around and come down the east side of the building and exit across the front. So you actually make a loop around and you never, you never cross back across the building where people would be parked.
Right.
But the driver wouldn't be on the building side.
Passenger would be on the building sides. Be no way to access them.
That would work in Britain, but not here.
So you'd go, you'd reverse that flow. So you'd come in on the front, turn right. Well, that was proposed and for various reasons, the thought was that it would be more of a conflict. Unless if you had to go all the way to the north and back out. However, there wouldn't be a stacking.
No, you don't have, you'd stack all the way right to the end.
My recollection too is with the meeting with petitioners, I, I just assume, I, I don't want to look at the drive through. And if we could height it as much as possible with the building screening it, that's why it's the best alternative. So that's where we came up with height it. We don't want to see it from Jackson Road.
We may not even want to see it at all.
Commissioner Moore.
So I just want to first say that I want to pay my appreciation to Mr. Curtis for not considering another storage business on Jackson Road.
You're welcome.
Oh, car wash.
Car wash.
Oh gosh, yes, another car wash. And your thoughts are not lost on me. I'm a little torn. And I say that for a couple of reasons. One is the practical fact of it is, is what Mr. Commissioner Hume just, just talked about. You know, the sustainability, I mean, we're, we're, we have a whole sustainability task force. They've been working for a year or more, two years. Together a whole sustainability plan. So we're trying to get ahead of the game. We have, I say ahead because we haven't, we haven't been hit by so much climate change, severe climate change in the country, but nonetheless, more emissions is, is not something that we're looking to. On the other hand, I get it. All these businesses lost a lot of money during COVID and that's why they all want drive throughs now, even the Paneras. Paneras never used to have drive through. It always had been a, like someone said, pharmacy or a fast food. And now everybody wants it. And in some ways, I wish we had thought about the sustainability stuff. I mean, it's spot on. It's a spot on issue that we should be considering as a planning commission. I mean, you know, sometimes we, we don't, we hold both issues, but we don't connect the dots. And they would be easy to vote for this because as a, you know, if I were a business person, I would probably think similarly so. I would want a drive through. But I'm not and I'm a commissioner, so I'm really pulled in this, in this. So I'm not even sure I'm going to vote now because I, after, when I was looking at the materials, I did not consider the sustainability issue. Although I did consider the circulation issue because I've been talking about it. The Myers circulation issue as well, if you look at how the pharmacy at Myers pulls in and how they're, when they start getting backed up, they're in the drive to go past the store to get in the parking area. So it's just a mess. And those other places, I've mentioned all this before and, and now I was, I've been to the new Panera a couple of times and I, I got out of the mind. Went into the store, got some food and I got it in five minutes because it was stacked, I guess.
The drive through was?
Uh huh. And so anyway, I don't really know, I'm a little conflicted on this. That's because I'm against the project. I just am really concerned about what we're saying in terms of our planning. I mean, with the planning commission. And by statute, state statute, we're charged with planning. Because we're a small township, we don't have a good planning department. And under the leadership of Chair Culberson, she's inserted some planning and we've been talking about it. I've been challenging folks to think about planning, so, but it just, it's taken some time. So those are just the remarks I wanted to make tonight.
Thank you.
So.
Yeah.
You sure?
Yeah.
I, I'll just kind of piggyback. Is this an opportunity, is this an opportunity to ask for, you know, EV charging stations as part of the conditional use to help try to make solar, anything is part, you know, of the sustainability elements? If that's appropriate, if you're willing, that may, you know, persuade you.
Persuade you.
But I, I just want to go out of the record. I'm not going to be voting yes for this for one reason, one reason only. If you got a traffic engineer to sign off on this, I'd feel much more comfortable. Until I get a traffic review, I'm not willing to, to vote in favor of this. So that's where I'm stuck at is I want to see a traffic engineer telling me that this is acceptable with the queuing and, you know, we don't know what type of business is going in. So I, it's just, there's too many unknowns for me at this time. But it's not that I'm opposed. I just want to see something, you know, from, from an engineer with, with the type of traffic and what's the type of business being proposed.
And I know some have said we haven't planned, but we kind of have planned a little bit through our zoning and through our ordinance and Jeff Hume pointed it out, 36 dash 74, brand 12. We've planned for this to be retail, personal service, office, restaurant, government, appliance repair, funeral home, church, synagogue, mosque and banks. And it can't be banked because you got to bank next to you. So it's one or the other. So if it's not going to be restaurant, what's it going to be? Is it going to be retail? Is it going to be some kind of office space? I don't know what would go in there, but you know, we say we're against drive throughs, but, but, but our residents aren't, but the people aren't. They're using them. They're using them like crazy.
I use them too.
I, I mean, so like, it's kind of the, the way it is, the market is. So do we, do we modify, do we say that they shall not allow the vehicles to stack anymore than the midpoint of that northern wall? So like, hey, we got no, too many people here. And I'm kind of confused now because I don't know if a one bay is where you pay and pick it up or if a two bay is where you pay at one, you pick it up at the other. I, I don't know what the, is that, is there, is that what a two bay is or is a two bay?
Well, the, the one that Panera has, has the drive through, but also a pickup line, lane.
Like for like the Uber drivers and the DoorDash?
That's a good, I, I don't know.
No, the people, you can order your food and get it in a separate line for pickup.
Oh, like very.
It's a border line.
Yeah. Right. So you preorder and you can pick it up faster.
Okay, cut to the front. And I, and I agree with your thought that, that it's a, it's a dichotomous situation. You know, I can see where the township would like to have a certain path of, of usages. And yet the public wants this, this kind of.
They want what they want.
This kind of need. And so we are caught in between on this to some extent. You know, as a, as a businessman, we have been for years with the Ann Arbor DDA, with Susan Polly before she retired, partnered with the city of Ann Arbor and the DDA to do energy efficiency programs on our commercial buildings. And the reason we were selected by the DDA was because we were energy conscious before these programs came out. And so philosophically, we, we understand the value of improving energy efficiency, doing various things that need to be done. But from our perspective, I, I do believe that particularly in this beautiful area of SIO Township, that, that in certain selected areas, and I'm not saying just our building, that drive throughs are going to drive the economy to some extent. And it's not because I'm driving it, it's the public is driving. And listening to our tenants, listening to prospect dependents who we've tried to solicit by saying that there's a possibility of having a drive through clearly indicates to us that this is something that is not going to stop. And I, I know that there's a desire by some to say we want to stop this, but unless you tell the consumer, the American consumer, that it's to stop, I, I, I don't think that that can happen.
So, so and I guess I'll ask theoretically, where, where do we want drive throughs to be? Do we want them to be in transportation corridors areas? Do we want them to be where there's density, where there's people? I mean, what's the best place from Wagner to Parker for a drive through? Where, where should, where should we have them? Where shouldn't we have them?
I don't think you're, you're looking at me. I'll answer.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm looking out there.
It isn't a question of where they should be placed.
Everyone, everyone.
No, no, it's not a question of where they should be placed. It's they create more emissions, there's more congestion, it's not pedestrian friendly. So it's not necessarily, I mean, that, those three issues would happen if it were at Wagner and Jackson. Or Zeeb.
No, 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 right.
And, and I would agree but disagree. I think that you're on the right path to ask this and Commissioner Hume pointed out earlier, form based coding would put different businesses in different locations, could. You could limit the uses in one area and permit it in another.
And I think that this might be part of the discussion for that. And then on your comment about emissions, we're trying to push people, we. The world is, the people in the world are trying to push people towards electric vehicles or hybrids. And I get better fuel economy when I'm sitting still than I do when I'm moving because mine doesn't turn on until I need it. So others would do the same thing. Once you, once we've switched over, that is not necessarily going to burn more fuel just by being in a queue. Now, could we bump up the incentive to have some charging stations? I don't know whether people are gonna go to a fast food restaurant and be in there very long. So that might not be the best spot for it because of what restaurant they get next door. So I don't, I can't see how that could bump that handy there.
So cars do idle right now, maybe in the future they won't.
Some cars do.
Most cars do. Where do the drive-throughs go? I think they go next to the casinos, they go next to the marijuana dispensaries, they go next to the adult bookstores. I'm just trying to paint it out, I'm just trying to lay it out. We don't have them here. We should not have drive-throughs for the same reason, they're detrimental to our community.
But we just put one in, didn't we just put one in for, I mean, I assume that Panera left this place because they went for greener pastures, i.e. a damn drive-through. Maybe I'm wrong.
You don't need to assume it, they stated.
Yeah, 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 and McDonald's has a drive-through, and Burger King has a drive-through, and Culvers and Wendy's. So like, and I'm not trying to be pro or anti-drive-through, I'm just asking the philosophical question. If that's what the market wants, i.e. if that's what Scioto Township people want, I mean, don't our residents want this? And when they, when they, when they vote with their pocketbooks, when they go to the Panera, do the drive-through, as Kim attested to earlier, and so.
They do.
I don't know what the sweet spot is.
I've heard residents come here, we talked about drive-throughs before. And I've heard residents say, I rely on a drive-through.
So, so if we say no to this. If we say no to this, then what happens? They say, well, we gotta, we gotta do some kind of bistro or boutique restaurant or something different or something smaller that isn't gonna have a drive-through. It kind of takes fast food out of the mix. Maybe that's not a bad thing, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't take fast food out of the mix. But, but it's gonna be, it might not be a restaurant.
It would take fast food and a restaurant out of the mix.
Right, and are we okay with that? Are we okay with a non-restaurant going in there? And, and I just ask that philosophically, you know.
Yeah, and that's, just to answer that number.
Right.
That's why it's a difficult decision for me. Because I understand the, the business decision and I understand the sustainability decision. I'm holding both of them at the same time.
I want a microbrewer going there, but that's not gonna happen.
But, okay, I think, I, I see, I mean, there are levels of things here. One is we're not convinced that it, it works well. We're compromising one on having one drive-through window that is a order, pay, pickup, whatever. We are, if you have a drive-through, technically you would be increasing traffic. And we have a relatively dangerous situation where we have parking, two businesses backing out into the main driveway. We're not, even though we're expanding a little of the outdoor seating area, we're not really enhancing and making a place where you want to sit out and stay and be, you know, enjoy, you know, eating outdoors. To me, it's, there's just a lot of compromise going on. And I'm not sure any of those things are, are all that positive, you know? When you have a proposal that compromises this and compromises sustainability, compromises the pedestrian vehicular conflicts, it compromises the functionality, you know, for a fast food restaurant. I just have some skimmings about it.
Going back to that, oh, I'm sorry, Rob.
No, you spoke before I raised my hand.
Oh, well, going back to the, we've approved them in the past. I just, I said this before, I don't believe that the mistakes of the past should be determining what we approve today. I didn't join the planning commission because I thought you were doing a great job. Sorry, Jan. I don't take, I don't take my hundred dollars a meeting and, and spend time away from my family to do this because everything's hunky-dory. It's because I don't want any more drive-throughs, I don't want any more car dealerships, I don't want any more car washes, I don't want any more storage units in Scioto Township. And so we have the power to say no, and we need to start today. We should have started, you know, ten years ago, but we can start today and say no, no more drive-throughs in Scioto Township. Let's say that. Sorry, Bob.
Okay.
And it's all, it's along that line. And it's along the line of where, where do we want drive-throughs?
Right.
And to me, drive-throughs go on at freeway exits because people are coming and going and they want to get back on the highway and get, that's what I use. I know, I don't go to McDonald's, but I'll go to a Panera that has a quick delivery. But I usually pull into the parking lot and go in and then order and go back out and get out of there. However, I see the point of having them when you're traveling. This one, in order to get to it, you have to make a right turn on Jackson, make a loop around, come back, stop again at the light, cross over, go down past the store, come back around, and then you can get to this location. It's not a very fast food-friendly drive-through for the freeway, which is why I want to see drive-throughs. For residents, I go down, I'll drive into town and I'll pull into a, into a small restaurant that I like and I'll order food ahead of time and I'll walk in and walk back out. Yeah, I'll call that fast. So I'm not sure this is the right location for a drive-through myself.
And, you know, I just wanted to add, I think I was thinking about everybody's comments about drive-throughs. I go to the Carlisle Grill, and I go to where they have their pickup parking on the side of the building, and they bring the food to me. And they don't have a drive-through. So people can be accommodated in other ways, and that's a, that's a function of the pandemic too because people need to make money. And, you know, they need to accommodate people, folks that didn't want to come into the restaurants. And so that was the way they, and you'd see these pickup parking spaces.
It works better some places than others.
Yeah.
I would say in general, from what we have heard from people, and we've been marketing this building for over a year, the likelihood of having a quality restaurateur is minimal or minimized considerably without it, even though it's a compromised drive-through that doesn't have the two lanes that, or three lanes at one or more. Based on your, on your mixed-use requirements, I'd like to think that we've been compliant with virtually all of the elements that would protect the public. And in our company, we inspect all of our buildings every day to make sure there's something that, if we're missing, we need to investigate it. And we've thought through this quite a bit. And I know that there is a push in the township to stop these certain use. And I, I appreciate your viewpoint, I do. It's not that I disrespect it or think otherwise, this is why we're here. But the ultimate decider of the marketplace is not me, not any of us here, it's the public. And this is clearly an indication to me, after a year of marketing this building, that the public demands and wants drive-throughs. That's why Panera left, wasn't the rent, the rent was cheap, the location's great, that area is wonderful. The building is a well-kept building, only twenty years old. Why would they leave? Well, it wasn't because of us, it was a drive-through.
Which wasn't because of us, this commission.
Well, I know what I'm saying is that they left to build another, yet another building because it was, it made economic sense for them to do so because their customer, and we're their customer too, but their customer demanded it. Panera left not because they wanted to leave, they left because they had to leave. That's the difference. And so we're.
They couldn't make money post-pandemic at that site?
We helped them as best they could during the pandemic.
We're talking about post-pandemic?
The question is, how long was post-pandemic per tenant? Some were affected longer than others. Because they're a national brand, doesn't mean that they're solvent. I'm not saying they're not solvent, but what my point is, that the bigger a company is, doesn't mean that they can't fall. And even though during the pandemic, we did what we could to help them, it was clear in their minds and made clear to us that unless there was a drive-through function, they were leaving.
Well, if they didn't have a place to go, I mean, what, would they have gone to Dexter so they could build a drive-through? Or they gone to?
It's a good question, they would have gone somewhere else, they would have found a place to go. You know, they, it would have been, it's, I don't mean next year or the year after, but it was inevitable to us. And in fact, when we met with Mr. Luan the first time, this is going back, David and I met him probably about eight, nine months ago. And we had reviewed some of the records where Panera had investigated ten years ago of just thinking in terms of a drive-through function without the pandemic. So for those people who called in and voiced their thoughts, I'm not disagreeing with their position. I'm not taking away from their thinking. But I want them to realize that we're here today because of not a want, but a need. I think in order to maintain the quality of tenancy in this beautiful area that you have taken great measures to protect and make as good as it is, I truly believe, not just for us, but for others selectively, you should consider still drive-throughs because they are what the public demand. It's as simple as that. And to deny that in an area that is not a walking area, I think.
There will never be a walking area if we keep building drive-throughs. And the, the public doesn't, sorry, the public and the market does not determine what gets built in Scioto. If that was the case, we wouldn't even have zoning laws. They, the market could take care of it, the public could take care of it. We, the planning commission, are here to say, no, this is bad for our community. We want to see a change here in Scioto. We don't want drive-throughs here in Scioto. This is our time to say it. And the reason why Panera left is because they had somewhere else to go close by because we had already approved a drive-through location somewhere else that was right down the road. And we should have said no then, you would have still had your Panera. But now that we, now that, we can't go back and change the past, but we can stop Carlisle Grill from abandoning their location to move down here because they get a drive-through. I'm not saying they're actually gonna do that, I'm just trying to bring that, bring it all back as an example.
So we have a question for Mr. Curtis. There was a litany of other kind of businesses you could have there that you could rent. Have you been getting or have you reached out to other kinds of businesses that come out?
We're open to anyone. We're open to anyone, but no, the answer is no. We have not had any other inquiries outside of food. I think the perception, and I think clearly so, it's, it's a food destination, perhaps because it has been and it recognizes that. In the past, when we've had food downtown, because primarily our buildings are downtown, when we've had a restaurant or a cafe, jolly speaking, that's what we end up having contacting us. But based on, you know, your, your zoning laws, I hope that we've been in compliance. I hope that there's consideration to be open to having this drive-through.
Why, like a destination restaurant, a bistro, something like that?
Open to it.
Is it not big enough or, or the people, is it?
I would say the parking is plenty big enough. You have close to ninety parking spots there, ADA and regular. We haven't advertised this solely for drive-throughs. We've said there's a potential for it, but we're open to any, any, any and all uses that are out there. And there's an absence of people contacting us, wanting to know what's gonna happen with.
What if you had like a DDA liquor license or the ability to get a DDA liquor license? You have a something, something there.
Without a liquor license would be problematic unless it's a Panera or a family restaurant. But, you know, we're not focusing on a restaurant with liquor or without.
No, I just, I mean for the marketability, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand. I'm saying, I would think that if you're able to, if you're able to let prospective tenants know that, hey, you'd be entitled to apply for a DDA liquor license so that you could have food and spirits, and that might, might pique interest.
As a landlord, I stay very clear of what they might be able to get. I leave that up to the restaurateur. And as far as I know, in order to get a liquor license, it's not that we, the landlords, are the owners of a building, but rather the tenant. The tenant would dictate whether or not a license would be approved.
There's two new restaurants in that plaza, Dexter and Arbor Road and Dan Hoey. One's a Mexican restaurant, it's a second, Chilean, because it's a second restaurant from their location at Maple and Liberty. And then there's an Italian restaurant over there. And I'm just wondering why that location seems to be primed for.
I'd agree. I would think the same. And I would have, not bet the farm, but I would have been very surprised back a year ago when we aggressively contacted probably a hundred different franchise organizations, good quality companies that we thought would make a nice fit that aren't here in Ann Arbor. Some are more regional, might be southern, some might be eastern, west coast. We've covered the country with inquiries. And as of now, we have no takers. So I think that it's clear to us that even if it's a minor use of having a minor drive-through function, which this is in comparison to what you see out there today. And on either side of us, we have banks that have three drive-through bays. But even if it's a minor drive-through, it makes a huge difference, in my opinion, as to whether or not we would be able to attract a quality tenant that might do a little bit of business drive-through and still have a sit-down. That's what we're, we're hoping for, that's what we're looking for. Something that's gonna fit the area, that will be complementary to this part of Scioto Township. We are invested, we own the building, we manage it, we're not leaving town. It's a building that we want to keep. So we're gonna take our time to find the right people. But to find the right people means that we have to have the avenue, the avenues to be able to attract the right people. And that's why we're here.
Yes, we are.
So it was hard to tell. So I support you in concept, and I had a motion that I was prepared to make that would have authorized it with a bunch of conditions about when the deliveries could occur and stacking spaces and directing staff where to park and not allowing vehicles to stack or queue beyond the midpoint of the northern lane or all these kind of things to address some of the concerns. But I can read a room, and I don't think I have three people who would support me. So I'm not going to be making a motion because I don't think that the motion that I would tender would have support. So I await a motion by somebody else.
Happy to make a motion unless anybody, I'm sorry, Bob again.
Commissioner Hyde?
Well, no, the only reason I raised my hand is so that I would know that I wanted to speak. I think that the point that has been made about the banks have, on each side of them, have drive-throughs. And you only have to look at the map to see that you come in on one side of the building and you circulate around and you come out the other side. And there's good designs for drive-throughs and there are bad designs. And this one, you come in and you have to loop around the whole parking lot and come back the same side and out. It's, it causes conflict with the parking lot. You're not, you're, we could, we could make requirements that they put raised-guarded passenger walk spaces, but you still have to cross paths. I think we're causing a problem here. The fact that they have not received offers even for a drive-through, even though it sounds like they've got it out there in the public's eye, that they have permission even, whether they do or not, it's not attractive, it's not attractive enough. I think that they're just as likely to, they may be just as likely. I think that they're just as likely to, they may be just as likely to have a regular restaurant and rent into the same spot. And I think that they ought to market for that.
Now, do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, sure. Regarding the conditional land use, number CU 23009, Curtis Commercial Drive-Thru Restaurant Within Mixed Use. Based upon the information received from the applicant and reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds the site plan and related information received by the township fails to meet the required standards and findings for conditional land use and recommends denial. Specifically, this found that the following required standards and findings found in section 36-224 of the zoning ordinance have not been demonstrated by the applicant. Specifically, that D, the proposed use, will be detrimental, hazardous, and disturbing to the future neighboring uses, persons, property, and the public welfare.
And I'd like to add a, just a friendly amendment to that. And that's specifically because of the pedestrian traffic conflict and, yeah.
Traffic circulation.
And circulation, loading.
What, issues related to?
A vehicular and traffic conflict, pedestrian conflict.
Well, can we modify that not specifically because of, uh?
Well, she could add a G or, I mean, she could just add another, you know, it can be her own sentence.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to.
It's a motion on the table floor, has to be a friendly amendment accepted by the moving.
Uh, including, yes, thank you.
Yeah, vehicular pedestrian conflicts. And congestion.
Jane?
I have to go to a break.
There's a long time to do so. By recommending a denial, you're giving us no chance to come back with any type of revision to this plan you're forcing us to reapply. At this point, I would like to see a postponement or time for us to reassess and come back to you. Unless Doug even correct me, with a denial here, we're still allowed to go to the board of trustees?
Yes, because we're trustees.
Okay.
Just a recommendation.
Yes. So could I make another request? Because there's several of you that specifically said no. I'd like to understand a little more detail on where we need to go. Mr. Chang, you said something about a traffic study. I'm not a traffic engineer, pretend to be one. But what type of information are you looking for in that traffic study? And is there an example from, say, Panera Bread that we could get to show us what that information would look like?
Well, I think, well, I think, go ahead, Chris, did you?
Well, I don't know if the previous Panera Bread had a traffic study, the one that's out there by Meyer. What I would ask though is a traffic impact study that states that this is, what is this, a 4,000 square foot building?
4,700.
4,700 square foot potential drive-through. And then you're going to have to assess, well, what if it is a Chick-fil-A? What if it's a Subway? What if it's McDonald's? I'd like to know what kind of queuing, what kind of traffic impacts it's going to have, what type of conflicts it's going to have with the banks, pedestrians. That's what that study will flush out. So at minimum, I'd want to see that. Yes.
Okay, and that's, that's better understood.
But there might be folks who just aren't going to ever approve a drive-through. You know, I mean, I, I'm okay postponing, I'm okay if we vote on this and it goes up or down one way or the other. I defer to the body.
And I, and I do think, I mean, you don't have to go to the trustees immediately. You could invest in a traffic study knowing that, you know, that was one of the concerns, environmental concerns for some of the other concerns raised.
And I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure I'm clear what each commissioner is looking for for this project to move forward then. So.
I would hope that if we answered your questions and answered them to a satisfactory level, without it being decided upon blatantly or unconditionally that there's a no, I would appreciate that. I think it's an appropriate way to look at any decision, to look at it openly. And, you know, I hear you. And I'd like to think that there's an avenue to make this successful.
Well, I think, I think part of it, I mean, from what I've heard, and people can chime in, it is, okay, we've got the pedestrian and congestion and that type of thing. We do have environmental concerns. We have a concern raised that it isn't all that convenient off a freeway. If we were looking at the conditional use, it's where is it most appropriate for that conditional use? And the frequency, maybe the banks have drive-throughs and they've been approved a long time, but the banks also don't have that type of, of frequency and stacking issues that restaurants have. So I think part of what you're trying to do in a conditional use is, and that's why it's a conditional use, is it appropriate for this particular location? And so I think there are some concerns, you know, whether it is appropriate for this particular location in CIO. So I hope that gives you some indication of, of where we're at. And if you want, and there's nothing that says you can't come with additional information when it comes before the trustees. This is how we tried to address some of the concerns that some of the planning commissioners raised. Yeah.
There was a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, there wasn't, we don't have a second yet.
But while we're chatting, you know, I think that this all arose, this is all the township's fault. You should still have your, you should still have your tenant. And our, our past decisions have negatively affected you. And I get that, that like you, you're in a really tough spot and that it seems like drive-through is the only solution here. I just have to say though that I, it is that if we can continue down this path, we will continue to force ourselves into approving more and more of these car-oriented businesses. And we will never be able to have a, a non, non-drive-through restaurant. Maybe not, not never, but we won't have a chance of having a non-drive-through restaurant in that location if we continue down this path. Now, I get that it's difficult to, to, to market that location without a drive-through because, yeah, you've got a drive-through bank on either side, those shouldn't be there either. We need a much, we've got a lot of work to do, is what I'm trying to say. And it sucks that you're caught up in the middle of it, but I think that this is the, this is the growing pains that it takes to get to the right spot. We can't just keep doing what we've been doing and hope it's all going to work out.
I appreciate your sentiments, it's very, very.
Okay, yeah, we need to kind of.
Go on the agenda item, Joe.
Yeah. So Commissioner Hyde, you support the motion as the friendly amendment? Okay. Any further discussion?
I am going to be voting against it, while I appreciate it, because I think there could have been a number of conditions that placed on it that would have addressed public safety and queuing and the concerns that we've noted. But I appreciate the sentiments and the discussion tonight, robust. I think we've got a track in something.
We'll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner Hume?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Culberson?
Yes.
Motion to deny was approved, was carried.
Next to our second public hearing.
Questioned procedurally, so they can bring it to the full board in its current state or in some revised state? Is that what happens? Or the revision significantly, what happens? I'm just curious.
You should go to the township board on the current panel, okay? And. Okay, thank you.
Right, conditional use, number 23010 PSP, number 23011 Slim Chicken Mixed Use Drive-Thru Burger Runt. I'll open the public hearing at 9:21. And we'll begin with the petitioner line, I believe.
I know, I do not see a petitioner online.
Oh, was this the one they communicated they weren't going to be here? There was an email.
There's a hand up to Brian Sasse. So I'm assuming that it's the petitioner.
All right.
Let me make Brian a panelist. Is he on in here? Oh, there he is.
Hello?
Oh, there you go, sorry, that's Ryan.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, commissioners. I did email prior, we would like to, as the applicant and developer, to postpone our presentation till the next commission hearing. We do understand the importance of having a traffic study, which, you know, through listening throughout this hearing is going to be very important for our presentation. And unfortunately, it will not be ready till next week. So we are hoping that you guys will be willing for us to present on the August 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then what we need to do, yeah, we need to have, hold the public, the public hearing, if there's anyone that wants to, and then we postpone it, right?
Yeah, you just have to, you have to postpone the date certain. And then you don't have to take public comment tonight. You can, it doesn't actually repost it. So if you want to postpone the date certain, that opens the public hearing back up.
For the next day, but we, if there's someone that wants to comment, we should.
You, you could, but you don't have to. If you're postponing action, you're postponing action.
Move to postpone this agenda item to?
Oh, uncertain?
August, date uncertain.
Yeah, and they asked for August.
So a late August need.
Excuse me, the applicant, what date did you request again?
Um, we'd like to be on the August 14th meeting if possible.
Have we already advertised for the August 14th?
No, we advertised for this evening.
Well, I don't mean this one in particular, but for any.
You can't, it wouldn't be renoticed.
You mean other?
Other.
Oh, other, what's on the agenda?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I'd seen notices, I just didn't know if it was for that meeting. If they've already been announced.
Yeah.
So that might jam up our schedule is what I was thinking.
But do you know?
I'm not aware of a public character for the 14th.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, thanks for asking. All right, is, um, I guess I would like to just ask if there are any, if anyone's online that wants to.
We should allow, if they've been here and waited.
We didn't let them do it at the, you know, general public.
Right. And there might be, and I, I just for, for the record, we don't have anyone in township hall right now. So I'd like to, and I'd just like to, before we postpone, go ahead and open it up to anyone who would like to address this particular conditional use.
Okay, and just to be clear, that people will have the ability to address us again on the 14th?
Yes.
So we do have a hand up, I believe it was Paula G. So Paula G, you have before.
Yeah, thank you very much for, I feel sorry for the last gentleman. And I just really find the traffic congestion and safety a big issue in our area. And to tell you the truth, I wish you hadn't approved the current Paneras. I would frequent the other Panera probably three times a week because I love their bakery and their bread. And I would go in and order it even with reasons that I, I would wear a mask or I would go in there, I even went in there when they opened up for a little while and were just selling bread. And saves me the drive to Arbor Farms. I'd like to see more small places like Arbor Farms, something with some community, and it's a shame we did have a pandemic, and I do feel sorry for that gentleman. Anyway, and I appreciate the thought involved in their last decision. Thank you.
Mr. Rob Pattinson, Mr. Pattinson, you have.
Well, it takes time, and it takes thought, and it takes intention. And we're not trying to run anybody over. Would we deny them or would we approve them? It's just, I mean, I think the discussion around this table was thoughtful and plentiful on all the angles. But nobody's trying to do anybody.
Jonathan?
Okay.
Jonathan, you have the floor.
Yeah, I wasn't going to comment on that, it was me. So I think it's kind of naive to think that we're going to change the future of South Township and save the world by denying a drive-through or two or five. It'd be nice to see some perspective in this conversation. Way, way out of line with, with reality. I mean, all very great ideals and all, but have you seen Jackson Road? Do you see how many cars are driving up and down? You, you, you're not going to make the world a better place by denying a few drive-throughs. Sorry, it's kind of naive. Thank you.
You have to start somewhere.
Hang on, guys.
Well, sure, you do have to start somewhere. But, and, and I'll take just a second here to respond to that. But we are, I'm sorry, did you want to say something else before I continue?
No, I'm being chastised for replying.
Oh, no, 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 I think it's great that you replied. I think the conversation between the public and our representatives and our volunteers is great. I think it helps bring to light issues that may not otherwise have, have come to light. And I do agree, but I mean, we're talking drops in the ocean. And the, the, in comparison to what you're doing to a few properties. uh, it doesn't seem fair or balanced to just say, okay, well, we have these new ideals and we're gonna start doing things differently, starting with you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
You're welcome, have a great night, thanks everybody.
At this point, there are no more hands up for the Slim Chickens Public Hearing, which we will resume on the fourteenth.
And we have a, yeah, a motion to postpone, um, until August fourteenth.
Support.
Commissioner Hyde, uh, further discussion on.
Is that my motion?
Yes.
You made it so long, you forgot.
Well, yeah, I made it a while ago, so I didn't know where.
Sorry, yeah, we're picking it back up, that's okay. All right, any further discussion? Um, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde.
Yes.
Commissioner Yuman.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Chen, yes. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
And Commissioner Calverson.
Yes.
Period to table, we'll, four to three.
All right. And we don't typically close the public hearing, correct? Or, 'cause we postponed it.
Postponed to base, or?
Okay, great. All right, then, and it, that's on, I thirty-two. So moving on, um, I did put in the packet, uh, a summary of the, um, actions, and I realized after you said that, that for some reason, the materials and waste didn't make it in. So I will update that document. Because I'm thinking, which one isn't in there? And then it's materials and waste. I will update that document and, um, get it out. Uh, so that's, uh, and Commissioner Reiser, were there some other things that you thought would be helpful to summarize at that? The, um, toward the, uh, environmental sustainability, sustainability.
Other than the one we spoke about, right?
Yeah. Uh, no, 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 thanks for taking my call today.
Okay, great. All right, I'll add that, and then, um, so we have a little bit of, so with that, then we'll move on to the Jackson Road zoning and overlay district discussion, and, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little lost.
Oh.
We're, this ESTF, bigger summaries, that's something we're discussing today?
Um, if we're, yeah, we're still taking comments, if there were some specific, Commissioner Reiser wanted me to try and summarize some things, so it wasn't as long.
Like an executive summary or just, like, redo something, yeah.
The most. And so I'll, I'll add materials and waste and use.
It's awfully hard to see what isn't there. I definitely understand.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the meat of it are really the actions, the goals and the actions, yeah. Okay, um, and then, uh, okay, so Jackson Road zoning and overlay, unless other, uh, there were other, um, items that, as we're continuing to review it, et cetera.
I'm gonna report back to the, the BOT, are you still taking planning commissioner comment or public comment or?
All, all of it, and there'll be, there's a public hearing scheduled for August twenty-four. Is that right? Or twenty-eight, I keep getting those dates wrong. It'd be two weeks after the fourteenth, so it must be the twenty-eighth. So we have a public hearing that's being noticed and will be scheduled for that.
Same, same, seven, seven PM here.
And did we specifically invite?
I will, we'll send out an, an email, so the BOT can, um, be included in that, 'cause that would maybe.
Maybe a couple.
Yep. Okay. And, um, we, we do need to get, um, we wanted to get some specific feedback from Warmong, uh, on the materials and waste piece. Those, so far, those are the requests that have come through. And then, yeah. Anybody else have some other requests while we're trying to gather information?
The ESTF.
Yeah.
I didn't, all I have is just that we were gonna have a discussion.
Yeah.
Maybe there's, uh, some, some things in the, uh, no, no.
Jan sent it to us by email today.
Oh, you did? I'll, I'll check.
It was just, it, it, trying to condense it so you could look just at the action plans, and then I, I missed the materials and waste section, so I had to, re, re, and send that out again.
And Christie will put it in the packet. Then people can refer to that.
Yeah. And, and it's much shorter than the.
Cold plans.
Yeah. Okay, Jackson Road zoning and overlay district. The meat, the Form Based Code. And, um.
And I would like to say, Commissioner Yuman, it is right here that we can address things like that, and I think that.
Right, absolutely.
This is, is a big issue, and it could have a major.
Yeah, I agree completely, which is, I, in my rambling earlier, I threw in an apology for not focusing on J-Rod this, in these past two weeks, because it is the most important thing, and really what, to me, it's most important to me. You know, I think very important to me as well. I'm glad that we're focusing on it. I wish I had spent more of my time preparing for this, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, I would just agree with you.
All right, I'm opening up that part. And, so, one of the things that I think would be helpful and, um, would be to really look at, we have that, that memorandum which deals with some of the detail of what the differences are, but I'd like to say, okay, what are, I, I mean, what is the goal of what we want to encourage on Jackson Road? And I think if we can agree kind of on the high level things, then it's easier to have the discussion about, you know, the, yeah, yes. And, and so, what I'd like to, yeah. Anyone else need a potty break?
Sure, I'll pick one.
Okay, then we'll recess for three to five minutes. Guys are fast.
Somewhere in August.
Mm-hmm. So it would probably be the twenty-first, just because we couldn't do it next Monday. What?
Twenty-first is open for me.
It's open for me, too.
Yeah, I can do it. I'll make it.
Unfortunately, me too. Well, what did, what date you talking about?
The twenty-first.
August. I'm not available, but I could probably figure something out. No, I've got a hundred. Believe it or not, I represent. I also meet in evenings.
Doesn't have to be a Monday.
Yeah, Thursdays are really good for me, I don't have lunch on Thursdays, if, if you wanna.
What about the seventeenth?
Is this room available on Thursdays?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Available the third Thursday, that's, that's only word of it.
All right, that's the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth.
The tenth.
Thursday.
Oh, 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 it's, yeah.
Yeah, I was backing you up instead of going forward.
Um, we do have to, oh.
I'm already here for Land Preservation Committee.
On what date?
Thursday the tenth.
We'll be out at six.
Oh, that's long.
No, I mean, my day shot already, I can, I'll already be here.
But if there, if your meeting is six.
No, we're, we're done at six.
They're done at six.
Oh, you're done at six.
So we could do seven, and you could have dinner.
Prefer that kind of stacking?
I don't care.
Listen, I, 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 I think, I'd rather do it on a Tuesday, just 'cause that's when we do our stuff. Are we gonna, what's the, what's the output from this meeting? A discussion, points, an ordinance, a draft ordinance, a direction to the board? I mean, what do we hope to accomplish at this meeting?
Which meeting?
The J-Rod.
The J-Rod.
The J-Rod Form Based Meeting.
Planning meeting, so set goals for what, what we see, what we wanna see happen.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and then, look, probably, probably have some public discussion with it. Um, what, what, how have you done that in the past, Doug? With trying to, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Get, get to a point where we're.
Yeah, when there, when there's a lot of, um, a lot of different opinion, and, you know, we're not, we're kind of a broad concept, and we wanna try to pull that down, follow that down into something actionable. Um, we would do a, kind of a swat exercise with the planning commission to try, to try to find out what, where we all really wanna go with this. Um, I hear a lot of different ideas right now. It'd be hard for me to start writing ordinance language based on, you know, the hearing comments I've heard up to this point. And so that would help us get together as a group, you know, set some goals.
So term in which direction we want.
How can I best solicit input, feedback from the board? Is this a meeting at which the board might also wanna be part of? Question mark, or no?
I would certainly think that they're, they're gonna need to be convinced that we're going in the right way before I actually spend a whole lot of time on it.
Yeah, so.
I think it could be a working session with the board, I mean, obviously, they have to, they have the final say on.
And if we're going in the wrong direction, sooner is, sooner is better than later.
I'm with you, Bob, that's why, I mean, I'm gonna bring it up, I'm gonna, I do a report to the board, and I'll include this, um.
I like your reports.
Uh, well, you haven't read tonight yet. So, uh, I wanna share with the board that the, the planning commission is interested in their feedback as to the June twenty-second, twenty-three J-Rod Mixed Use Report, and what their feelings are, their input is with respect to how we would incorporate these concepts into a potential ordinance that they would have to ultimately approve. Is, is that correct? Is that an accurate takeaway?
But I would actually encourage the board.
Oh, yeah.
To set, to be a participant in setting the goals, before we actually get into the language.
So, no, no, I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Bob, and I'm gonna try to figure out how, how to best do that.
You were talking lawyer talk.
All right, sorry. That's 'cause I'm married to a lawyer, my sister-in-law's a lawyer, but, um, I work with him. So, um, let me know what, let me, let me know what my ask is, let me know what your ask is of me, vis-à-vis the board, that's all.
And so let me just say something, I just thought of something. Along that Ann Arbor-Seline Corridor, right from ninety-four to Oak Valley.
Yeah, yeah.
None of those businesses have drive-throughs.
The Starbucks, the Starbucks does.
Starbucks, yes, that's right, Starbucks does.
They have pickup, though, they definitely have.
Everybody's got a pickup.
I know, I know, and they've set it up.
I just wanna throw that out.
Little stream of consciousness.
I'm, I'm just trying to say, do we want, do we want to try and do it on Thursday the tenth? I'm open to that. And that way, we keep this thing moving.
At?
At seven.
Seven o'clock?
That would give you ti, a dinner break, unless we wanna do it at six, and you don't get to eat, which I don't think is very good.
Whatever. I'll make it happen.
No, no, drive-through.
Yeah, go to. You boarded it down, no, no, plan, you know my dinner plan.
So if we, if we, and so we just have to make sure that they, if, if it's available, let's, um, make sure this room is available and, um, put it on for the tenth.
Is there a calendar on the webpage?
Yeah, there is.
Well, August tenth, special J-Rod meeting at seven o'clock or whatever.
Yeah, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a working session, and for goal setting, et cetera, and we would invite the trustees to part, any, the trustees to participate in that. And, so that we can, um, make sure we're, um.
Goal setting, public comment? Is there, um?
It's a working session, so it's not a public comment. But we'll have.
It'll be a public meeting, though.
Yeah, it'll be a public.
But not a public hearing.
No.
But that'll be, people will be able to call in and talk about it, so.
Please. Yeah, I think we need to designate a time when, and when folks can contribute.
I shall invite them tomorrow, encourage them tomorrow.
So is this where I put on the record what I said before? Um, I was looking at, when we addressed this issue before, uh, Mr. Luhan's memo highlighting the difference between what we have in our J-Rod ordinance and what would be, uh, more like a Form Based Code, um, difference. And, um, a lot of these things that are listed in this little, um, chart here that, uh, Luhan has, um, are dimensions. And one in particular that I understand a lot better is that the business, uh, is, uh, more or close to sidewalk, uh, encouraging pedestrian involvement, um, and that parking would be in the rear of the building. That's one of the differences I understand, unlike what we have in a lot of our places, where there's big parking lots in the front, you have to walk a mile to get to the building.
Uh, oh, just a slight correction, we have a limited amount of parking in front at this point in time.
Meyer was before.
Yeah, J-Rod.
Yeah.
Well, Menards.
The J-Rod only, but, that there's.
Panar, Panera.
Oh, Panera only has two rooms in front.
They got parking in front, and the building sits back.
The, the old Panera or the new Panera?
The new Panera.
There's a limited amount of, so yes, there can be parking, but, so gen, in broad strokes, you're correct.
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's something that I'm, um, clear on about what a Form Based, um, code is. And I was just saying earlier that beyond that, um, uh, I'm not clear on how the differences are and what we have today, and so I would be looking forward to some guidance from Mr. Luhan and helping me. I mean, I've been, helping me understand better as a policymaker on this commission how we proceed with this, with this topic and change things. Um, you know, I focused a lot of my remarks on mixed-use commercial and residential, including, um, pedestrian, um, and so, so I just kinda wanted to throw that out there for everybody, because I'm gonna need some help in understanding how we get to whatever the ordinance was.
Commissioner Hyde, and then Commissioner Yuman.
Well, I'm in line of discussion, Commissioner Moore. This comparison is specifically J-Rod versus Pittsfield Township, Form Based.
Yes.
We don't have to have that same form.
Yes, it was the memo.
We could have, we could have a different, um, goal in mind, and we would write our form to match that goal. So depending on what we set as our goals, do we wanna have parking all in the back? Well, then we write it that way, just like Pittsfield did. But we don't have to. It could be, it could be a form that we decide upon, that is decided upon by the township, and then it would be written that way. So this is a comparison of what, what is here and what is there.
Understand, I understand that.
Last question, when you, I think Jeff.
Yeah, then, Commissioner Reiser.
As, I think the ultimate, what we finally end up with, which I think is what you were asking, uh, Commissioner Moore, is, and what are we actually going to end up with? What are, what are we trying to, what's the finished product supposed to be, right? And I, I think there's two parts to the finished product. I like to say something before that as well, but, so, uh, we will, what is it gonna look like? That's, that's one part of this finished product, and also, what can go in there? Those are two different things, and from all of our discussions, I understand that though what it looks like is more important than what can go in there, but that we can have both, uh, conditions on there.
Components.
Components, thank you. Um, a, as far as, um, what we want, I would, I would like to broaden what we, the discussion about what we want into something more abstract than parking in the rear. I don't think parking, I would not say parking in the rear is what I want personally. What I would want are policies that, uh, allow a more, uh, walkable, uh, neighborhood or business approach, and if, if parking in the back is one way to achieve that, then I would say that is a form that helps us achieve these goals that we're trying to have goals of.
Yes.
That's what we.
Yes, you're saying the same thing.
Okay.
But there could be other ways to do it, too.
But, but, I, I, you know, um, I didn't, did I catch you off?
No, you're good.
Um, but at the end of the day, we need to write ordinances, thou shall or thou shall not, and then. And then, to me, you gotta get people kinda living or getting used to walking and biking and getting there, Jeff. So that's the problem, Jackson Road, in my opinion, is that people don't live there. I wish there was a couple of huge developments there, cause then if you build it, they will come with little restaurants or little grocery stores or things like that. But do people who live in the French country and the other one, do they, do they walk to the old, do they walk to, do they walk to wine garns? Do they walk to banfields? Do they walk to Metzgers? Or do they bike to Metzgers or do they drive to Metzgers? I think you gotta get things close to where people live or you gotta get people living where we want them to walk to. And, and that, that, so, I, I, I think that's it. So how do you, what do you, do you limit it? You say you have to have residential? Do you have to, you say like the first floor can be retail or this or that, but the second floor's gotta be residential? Or multifamily or something up there? Like you can only do it if you got tenants up there. I think that's how you get people walking. You gotta put, you know, bodies in the beds, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong on that.
No, I think you're right.
This is a goal, I mean, you're listing things here that, that are important for setting the goals.
And, and, and what, my question was gonna be for you, Doug. Are there places that we can go, drive to, park in the back or the side, wherever it is? Are there some examples out there in Superior Township, Ann Arbor Township, Ipsy Township, uh, Ann Arbor City, uh, Pittsfield Township? Are there some examples of some interesting developments that might say, oh, that's what's possible or that's what they're talking about that we could go and kick the tires and look at?
Yeah, I could get some examples.
Could, could, like, I wanna go there.
Bike lanes along Jackson Road might be, you know, we, a lot of people ride their bikes. They ride their bikes up and down my, now they're riding up and down Marshall Road because it's Country Beauty Road, County Beauty Road. But, you know, if, if you look at some of the playing that's going on, just driving around downtown, I mean, you know this yourself, you're seeing all the bike lines, lanes that are being put in, right in the street, not even up to the side anymore.
Yes, I am, and that creates another host of problems because the bike lanes, the dedicated bike lanes, um, make it difficult for the deliveries of Amazon, FedEx, and the US Mail and Uber Eats and DoorDash. And where do all those people, so there are developments that don't sufficiently plan for how deliveries are gonna happen. Then they park on trunk lanes and then it's a, it can be problematic.
Then you get delivery vehicles parked in the bike lane.
Bike lanes or on trunk lines, you're, you're like, you know, there's this very eleven, twelve-story building called The Foundry. There's a sushi place and a seven-eleven on the first division in Huron. And invariably, there'll be a FedEx or UPS or a U, oh, it's a little, there'd just be something in that right lane. That right lane is a de facto parking lane when somebody wants to deliver something.
Yeah.
So, so, so that's just, I mean, but that's a tangent, um, you know.
Yeah, and I think part of it is getting an idea of how you, uh, and, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about trying to make it more walkable and I think the point of getting more people living there, et cetera. And, and the question is, okay, I see a, a couple of issues is, one, where, you know, where and how do you start? Because in the relative short term, we do have the issue of being able to have, well, if crossroads comes in, you know, maybe two more developments of any kind of size that can be multifamily, you know? And, and so there's sort of like, how do we take advantage of what we've got now? And where do you focus some of that? And then what is the longer term, I think?
Yeah, I think, I think the focus question is a big issue. I mean, we have six miles of Jackson Road to do with, and Sire says by six, and by six township. You know, having, I think we have to start looking at maybe some nodes or areas where we're gonna be promoting a lot of this because a six-mile stretch.
Right.
With one little development here and three miles later, there's another little development, doesn't do much to create what I think.
So is it broken up to like Wagner to Park and Park to Zeeb and Zeeb to.
Just to say.
Stabler and Stabler to Baker and Baker to, all that, kinda like that?
For example.
Yeah, we, we, we used to have, you know, years ago, we had what we called Town Center North, Town Center South. We kinda got away from that. That resulted in what's now called the Town Center Development across country, French states. That has retail on the first floor and residential on the second floor. Um, so in, in any event, but, but I, I, just to, I would remember, we have a six-mile stretch of road that's mostly bullet marked. And so I think to accomplish getting all of these uses together, pedestrian and residential and commercial, I think we have to start to look at where do we really want this to happen?
Well, where do we start?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, cause we have, what's nice about the Wagner to.
Park?
Okay, Park, is you have a, a buildup of recent years, um, um, craft beer added to Carlisle to, um, what is it, that golf place off Jackson that we just had before us, Nanticoop, Pickleball. And so we could say that, you know, now in that area of Jackson, the problem is there isn't, or maybe there is, is there open space for residential to go?
Well, you get the Goodrich Theater possibility.
Right, that'd be a nice one.
That would be nice, that would be, that would be a great start.
If there was zone right, it would not force them to, but it would encourage them to, to go one way rather than another.
The other that we have is we also have, um, you know, there's, I mean, crossroads isn't on Jackson Road, but it is in an area, I, you know, where you have, um, you know, the old Gellman site. Um, you know, and there's that node, but we also have the Wood, Woodview Commons, um, that is a relatively large, now, but that's further out, but that, that has a.
That, that, well, it's true, the Poly Farmer Fleet or whatever, that tractor places, farmer places.
Tractor supplies.
Thank you.
And that has a relationship, and I, I think of that development has a more relationship with Dexter. It's on the Baker corridor. So maybe that's in.
Oh, well, I was thinking of Woodland Commons. You're talking about heritage on Baker? I'm talking about Woodland on Ja- Woodview on Jackson.
But Doug, it's just down the street from Menards and from Meyer.
Baker, Doug.
Where are we, Doug?
What, are, are we talking about Wood, Woodview?
Yep, and it's right next to, um, Sile Farms. I mean, it's.
You know.
Biggest residential.
So we have, I mean, if, if you're looking for potential where we have some residential density, that, how do you reinforce those?
And support them with business.
Right. And then, you know, you also have quite something, you know, man, parking, all that isn't working right either. Um, park and Jackson Road and Parkland Plaza, I mean, we added, but there's some issues there too. I mean, but if we could identify some potential where we could get the density and the, and some of the pedestrian pieces working, you know, the areas that we could concentrate on, that would be helpful.
At one point, we asked about having a map that showed all the, um, different zones laid onto one map. You know, we've got J-Rod, we've got the sewer and water districts, we've got, um, oh, I forget what that.
DDA.
Yeah, the, the DDA. So if we, if we, I'd like to include the ones that are in the water sewer districts in this discussion, even if they're not Jackson Road. Um, because, but maybe we wanna limit it to a particular area first, but, but really the overview here is what, where do we have the most urban?
Right.
Potential in the whole township and that's where the water and.
Like Livwag, or they call it Livwag, you know what that is?
I knew what that is.
And like, there's no place to buy, there's no party store, there's no retail, and, and there's gonna be a huge, should, should there be some, some retail in that area?
See, that was, that's part of the discussion, right there, and.
There is a, that property. Uh, east, northeast corner is for sale where that, that big sign is.
But that's a really tiny, yeah, a really tiny one.
Little store could go in there, but yeah.
So, yes, how can we encourage that?
Or, or you also have the Gellman piece too, which.
Is that vacant? Is that why you're bringing that up?
No.
No, but it has, it, it's not, it, more buildings could go on there. Oh.
I would sure. The soils ought to be remediated or whatever you call it.
Uh, no basements.
Yeah, right.
So how could, don't they own the property? How, how does that work? How can more buildings go on? I'm sorry.
Well, if they wanted to develop.
They wanted to develop. Oh, I wanted to develop.
There's, there's rooms.
Space.
I think there are several parcels, there are a few parcels. You can, you should be encouraging what, should be encouraged and discouraged where we don't want it to encourage.
So is there gonna?
But, does that make sense?
Is there gonna be any, like, at Liberty and Wagner and Crossroads, is it going to be mixed use? Or is it just residential?
Crossroads is just residential.
Yeah, that's already, that area, I believe, is actually in the Jackson Road overlay district, that's allowed.
Yes.
Mixed use right now. Yeah, thing goes right down to Wagner.
Yeah, we got the.
But that particular crossroads is just.
What, what's the mixed use? Men and women?
No, but we allowed.
What are you talking?
We allowed multifamily only.
Talking about by the summit, by, by.
By the master plan.
Yes. Sure, just, just east of the funeral home.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't mean that, mixed use and that, but I meant that whole quarter could be.
No, because, is it, but is it just only residential only in there? Is there going to be some retail?
No.
Yeah, it, it's, um.
All rental.
They're rental, they're going to rental, I thought they had a little shop or something, but it mostly gets.
No, they get a clubhouse, but not a shop. I don't, I don't remember a shop.
And they go, so they're gonna drive to Kroger? They're gonna drive to Meyer rather than walk to some little, something close potentially?
They might bike into Ann Arbor, it's closer.
I have a question. We, a long time ago, you mentioned that we started with that town square piece. And that has a lot of the elements, except there's parking in the front, but it has many of the elements of a, a farm-based mixed use. So why didn't more of those come in? I mean, what, and, you know, that, it sort of stopped there.
Yeah, I don't know why more didn't come in, um. That was what was kind of, at, at the time, in our master plan, sort of thing. And then ensuing master plans, the Town Center North, Town Center South, one way. I think because we opened up more in the Jackson Road quarter for general mixed use, and I'd have to, I don't remember exactly, but, but there used to be a specific Town Center North, Town Center South. Town Center North was this governmental area, federal commission, township qualified department. Um, Town Center South was supposed to be, was some commercial. We have to remember before, of that time, the vision, you know, it's, you know, had, the community changes and we have to change with desires of residents in the community. But it, some of you may not remember that years and years ago, at the time we had this Town Center North, Town Center South, the vision for the community was three commercial nodes, one at Wagner, one at Zeeb, one at Baker. Everything in between was gonna be office industrial. That was, that was the long, that was the long-term vision of Sire Township. And, and the idea outside of, if you even find a master plan, you can see that. So Wagner, Zeeb, Baker, primarily office industrial between those areas. And the idea back then was that we were, we were trying to get more businesses, now I was bringing up Trumo, you know, Trumo apart, like high-tech research office, high-paying jobs. I think we might have even called it a jobs note or something like that. But that was the idea and that idea had, ensuing master plans had changed where the more, we were now, uh, township was more accepting of commercial and, and we're trying, eastern part of the township as it provided the city of Ann Arbor, and I had started to move westward towards Zeeb Road, eventually past Zeeb Road in one of our master plans. And so there's been this kind of transition from more of the office industrial corridor to, uh, commercial retail. And then, yeah, probably two master plans ago or so, we went to this Jackson Road corridor idea where then we wanted to introduce one mixed use within the entire Jackson Road corridor, which then led to the Jackson overlay district, some states. So there's been kind of this evolution of the Jackson Road corridor. That probably was very kicked off when the Bullback was constructed, that was probably the first one. So it's, it's, it's an ever-changing, you know, evolution.
And what, what are the mile distances between like Wagner, Zeeb and Baker?
What's the question?
The mile, the, what's the, between mileage?
Two miles, maybe?
Two miles.
I'm just trying to get.
About two miles, cause the whole thing's.
Like that, yeah.
That's all the way to Parker?
Zeeb to Baker is two miles. I say that because I.
So about two miles, so they're two miles.
It's about a mile either way.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I'm just trying to think, you know, the, you know, when you try and think of a, a walking kind of node, you're, you're talking like fifteen minutes. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's a, that's a run.
Right, I'd like to have, speaking of walking, uh, have the residents and the, and the stores that they wanna walk to right in five minutes away, I mean, that's it. Otherwise, you're gonna be driving.
You know, I, I've been thinking that the, uh, was it the intersection of Zeeb and Jackson seems like a really great candidate for this kind of stuff, of the, uh, there's a, clearly a big commercial interest in that area, but there's also quite a number of residences already there. We've got it zoned for high, high density. Um, that might be the, the horse and cart that we're trying to, trying to, to discuss, right? Cause you're gonna need the people to walk to the businesses, otherwise you're not gonna go to businesses.
So hypothetically, would we allow mixed use on Park Road? South, south of Trailwoods?
Oh, okay.
Cause it's out of the sewer district?
No, no, but.
Yeah.
Does it have sewer down there? Park Road, does Park Road have sewer?
Probably part of it does, I know, I know, country French states does.
Right. Well, what about west of, this is just hypothetically, would, would we allow a, a restaurant or some, would we allow a, something nicer than a strip mall to go there? Would we allow a mixed-use retail west of Country French, south of Trailwoods? So people could walk there, bike there?
Probably not.
That, would, you know, some communities do things like that and they call them like neighborhood service commercial? That's supposed to only provide service to the folks who live there and it's not like a regional draw or township-wide draw. And, and there's a few examples of that that are out there that seem to work. Um, but that's, uh, you know, part of, and I'll, I'll, you know, generally, we'll probably get more into this in the fourteenth, but there's always, there has been, at least in my mind, I can't speak for anyone else, but there's been this idea that we would be allowing development, whether it's commercial or industrial or residential. Residential is a relatively new concept in the Jackson Road quarter, that was not something that we really even thought of ten years ago. But there's been this idea that our intense commercial development occurred within the Jackson, or within the Service Service District, okay? Jackson Road, a little bit of Wagner, a little bit of Zeeb, a little bit of Baker. And then outside of the Service Service District, we would be able to preserve those areas because we were promoting development along the Jackson Road. And actually, the township, despite what some may think, has done a very good job in our long-term planning because those areas outside of Jackson, outside of the Service Service District have been preserved for many years. And that has always been the. for many years, and that has always been the direction of Sire Township. You get, I I hear, I hear people say, oh, Sire's a suburban community. You drive a mile north or a mile south of Jackson.
It's a country.
It's a very rural community. And that is by design, that is purposely designed in Sire Township master plan.
That's why I said no to something being on Park Road.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm going with that, because the park, I'm not sure that going south of park is, would follow kind of our traditional development patterns. However, your point about neighborhood commercial service.
Yeah, with with sewer access.
Yeah, yeah, um, so. But I think what I'm hearing and what I've been hearing for a while is this, the Jackson Road corridor is, is this, is, is, there's really a transition. There's a desire to have more than, you know, to have particularly a high-density residential. That does also meet the long-term goals that we've had for many years, preserving the north part of township and some part of the township in more of a rural atmosphere. And that also follows, of course, the goals of the Land Preservation Commission, who's been buying up property and property rights for the last fifteen or twenty years. To, you know, to buy the most significant, important open spaces that have, you know, access to paths and wetlands and woodlands and things like that. So, you know, the the township has been doing good planning for many, many years. Uh, and and all of those come together, it's not just what happens here at the planning commission, it's the land preservation, it's township port, it's the planning commission, it's the master plan. It's the corridor planning. And, um, you know, I see this, I, this discussion of farm-based corridor, Jackson Road really district. And this is another step in the evolution of that. And really, a step in the evolution of concentrated development or mon development, that's always been, that's always been the goal, I think it's not. I'll get it out, I'll stop.
No, I think it's.
Can I say something real quick too? Yeah, I think what's lost is, as far as the transit corridor, that is from probably Wagner out to Zee. That's where the AATA runs, it takes you downtown, that's perfectly appropriate for mixed uses there. I will tell you, in the Ann Arbor, the Commission of Human would love this. Uh, we've, we've resolved a lot of parcels to TC one along Stadium, along Washington, Plymouth Road's next, it's going to be TC one, you've got it.
Transit corridor.
And, and those, those corridors, they don't allow drive-throughs, they're prohibited. They don't allow indoor stores, those are prohibited. But what they do encourage is.
They don't allow indoor what?
Indoor storage.
It is indoor storage.
Uh, don't even bring it, it's not gonna happen in in those corridors.
How about car wash?
I I can look it up though, if you want me to, I'll look it up.
No, don't.
I highly doubt it, but I will give you an answer in a second. But I also think that we have a minimum height too. So you're not building a single store, you're gonna move it up towards the street and you're gonna do a minimum of two stories. So it's going to encourage mixed uses and residential at much higher density. There's no parking requirements either. And I know this is really blowing up the whole Jackson corridor right now, what could be done there. But if we wanna see mixed uses in in, you know, more density and prohibit certain uses. Please, yeah, do you see what we could, you know, we could look into, you know, the ordinance, cause there's literally thousands of.
And that's kinda what, that's kinda forms-based.
Yes.
That's, that's.
It is, because it's telling you you have to be, the setbacks, the minimum height that you're gonna have to go on.
That's the one at uh.
No parking, yeah.
Oak Valley and 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 Ann Arbor, Celine Road, right, and there's some Michigan Avenue, like the Celine, Pittsfield area.
Is there?
And so a TC, I didn't know, it was the first time I ever heard about a TC one, so a TC one, Chris, is.
Transit corridor.
Transit corridor and the design is to create more uh, residential mixed use?
Yeah, it's because it's on a transit corridor, it's gonna promote, they want you to ride your bike and take the bus, that's right. There's no parking requirement, they're, they're hoping you fill the whole side up with, with, there is no floor area limitation. Fill the whole side out, hunter, build up. They're taking away parking from it, they're encouraging you, for those landowners now, to increase density, increase residential. Hopefully it becomes more affordable, knock on wood, that's gonna happen in Ann Arbor, but. We've had a lot of complaints too, about, because of putting people out of business that are there now. Well, they're, they're not good for, I mean, they can stay, always. Yeah, they'll stay, but if they, yeah, if they wanna.
And they'll be able to drive themselves.
You're, you're dead on arrival, it's not even something. No, I didn't say that they were right to complain, I'm just saying, there is a lot of complaints and. There's a lot of. We, we, we need to listen to what those complaints are too, so that we know whether we want to go down that particular.
So the the TC one, is that an ordinance in Ann Arbor?
It's a zoning, yes.
A zoning district, a zoning district.
Are there, are there any developments on, in the, in a TC one that are conforming to TC one yet, or is?
Very few, they're all not conforming.
Okay.
That, that, that's why there was a lot of opposition from bright, like, well, we're not conforming, but that's fine, you can exist.
This is brand new.
But we're throwing you that if you wanna come in and and do more resident, you know, do more density, by all means, you can do it, it's gonna be permitted.
Now, what would be paired with that is dealing with the, the sewer capacity. Because to actually, you know, do a minimum of two-story, doing, you know, that along a stretch of Jackson would, would happen and so it would happen in, you know, there'd be little segments of it un- until we expanded, we pre-negotiated.
We need to get the message out to our trustees that we need to start negotiations sooner rather than discussions before negotiations.
I mean, so that would be, that would be an important component.
Yeah, we need to talk.
Be, it, because it doesn't do any good to do the zoning if you really can't approve anything because you don't have the infrastructure.
So what would Ann Arbor say? That's what we need to find out.
And they'd probably be more supportive if it was a transit corridor piece, if there was planning behind it as a, as opposed to you know, just overly-nilly ask.
Yeah.
But I don't even know.
Car wash is not allowed, by the way, as Mr. Riser was requiring about how to permit use.
Well, you know, I applaud Ann Arbor's initiative, and I think that a lot of the work that they've been doing is, is really awesome, and, um. I guess, um, I'm, I'm just being cautious about basing it solely on whatever Ann Arbor is doing without any evidence that it's effective and gets the results they want. However, it all sounds great to me, because.
And we haven't had a lot of goals or any, any rezoning applications to the TC one yet either, so. Well, actually, it's already rezoned, but we just haven't had a whole lot of projects coming in under that zone, so. Uh, just wait.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, where are the projects come? Just.
Well, we've rezoned along Stadium.
Mm-hmm.
And along, uh, uh, Washington.
Yeah.
And Plymouth Road is next, I can tell you, City Council's gonna take it out, same with the planning commission, it's gonna get approved, I mean, I, I assume it's gonna get approved, I can't speak for that, but.
There's a development going on on Maple, right there, Maple and Paul Lane on the.
Yes.
On the other side where that church was alone for a long time up on that hill.
But that's not TC one over there.
That's residential.
No, no, I'm just thinking of development around Stadium, off of Stadium. There's a building, commercial building going in right next to the, it's been vacant for a long time, right next to uh, Bell's Diner. Do you know what that is?
No, yeah, it's unfortunately, that came in before the rezoning, it's, it's a credit. So it will have a drive-through, but they got in under the gun, so.
They sped that up.
Yep.
I have a, a, another question. Uh, you know, in all of, with all of the municipalities and that you deal with. Uh, a boulevard, you know, is, is a little different, you know, you, I mean, Washington is a big barrier, but it's not a boulevard. And I'm just trying to, can you think of any place where they've kind of transitioned something like a boulevard to something that's more.
Two lane, two lane road.
Pedestrian oriented and how you might accomplish that?
I mean, still keep it a boulevard, is that what you just said?
Well, well, just how you could accomplish.
Is the boulevard the best way to go these days?
Well, we got four lanes of traffic on ninety-four doing the same thing, why do we need four lanes of traffic running through the middle of our township?
Um, so I mean, there, there, there are ways that you can have that you can promote safe pedestrian access across. And we can talk, we can, I can.
Park those, those various systems.
Well, that was one of your issues, about the.
Yeah.
I mean, trying to.
Crossing the street on Jackson Road, Lysia project.
Lysia.
Well, I mean, the other, the other thing, you also have, you know, if you did dedicated bike lanes, could you, I mean, is the traffic such on Jackson Road that you would need to, you know, four lanes?
It's already, it's not bad enough to even need four lanes right now, I've never seen traffic on Jackson Road.
You just make, just make one a two-way road and the other a part of the boulevard as a bike road.
You don't see traffic on Jackson Road.
I've never gone on Jackson Road and not been able to hit fifty mile per hour, there's never traffic on Jackson Road. You stop at a red light.
Yeah.
And then you go fifty miles an hour again, there's never traffic on Jackson Road.
But I don't know if there are any, if there have been any studies, you know, that say, like, there's there are different ways you can deal with boulevards, you know, like, you know, making one-two way and making box up.
Yeah, but that, that could be a detail we can certainly get into too.
Get into, some of the shop.
But you have to also remember, you know, that a boulevard was viewed at the time as a very positive initiative. And if, let's say, a boulevard, the DDA, make this two-way, we weren't necessarily involved in car wash, but. Um, or others who were involved, uh, the idea of the boulevard, and if you see the original Jackson Road plan, that I have a copy of in my office. Uh, one of the purposes of the boulevard was to promote commercial development along the Jackson corridor and to help with lighted structures. And, um, uh, you know, and basically that's happened. If you, if you, if you do a comparison of the old two-lane Jackson and what was on both sides, there were a lot of lighted old structures, and those are gone. But so, if you, if you look at the goal of the boulevard and the old, the old planning process for that, the old DDA plan. You, you have to say they met their goals because they have met their goals. Now, that has produced other side effects that now we have to try to deal with. But, uh, and and we can try to do it, but I think that's a separate item, how to safely get across the, the Jackson boulevard.
Well, and, and I think how to create multimodal, I mean, a really active multimodal.
Yeah, yeah, I'm.
Yeah, so when we're saying transit corridor, we're saying multimodal transit.
Yeah.
By multimodal, you mean walk, bike?
Uh, you wanna get drives?
Drive. Us. Yeah.
Four?
Okay, eventually we're gonna have a light rail, I'm sure.
You're going to a jerk.
Okay. All right, so, uh, we will try to confirm that this room is available and schedule August tenth.
August tenth.
So do we invite the DDA, or do, do they have a role in that, or they're not really planning their administration?
They do.
I don't wanna disrespect them since it's, or, but I, I don't know how we interface with them or how they interface with Jackson Road and its planning, I don't.
We will invite them as well, let them know, I, I am attending there, um, and I told them we were working on this, and.
They're interested?
I'll let you guys know as soon as possible, I'm getting, I'm gonna be at the township tomorrow, and I, I think August tenth is ago, but let me. I'll confirm.
Okay, and then I did include the, the PUD with kind of my notes that we, we were talking how now that the proposed PUD is for the, basically the sewer district, except for residential. Taking out the density bonus, but not sure that the open space requirements and et cetera meet some of the goals we're trying to achieve in the Jackson Road corridor with form-based zoning. So, i- i- it, it sort of needs to be a part of that.
It does.
Unfortunately.
Okay, I get, I get your notes, we can, we can discern a whole.
Is the DDA interested in coming to a meeting?
I'll invite them.
No, they're.
I'll leave it at that.
We would be interested in hearing their input.
Their input.
Whether they have a desire to give it, we're gonna find out.
Yeah, and I'll continue to go to their meetings and.
Fill them in?
Fill them in, too.
The DDA, the, you know, the DDA generally has a, a goal of development along Jackson corridor. Because they, you know, the DDA is a TIF, so it's the tax income and finance area. And they, they generate revenue from increased property value. And so they are interested in increased property value along the Jackson corridor. That, that is.
Where are they getting it?
That is a, that is a singular interest of the DDA.
I think one of our concerns is how do we work with the DDA toward a common purpose for the township? Not, you're doing this and we're doing that, and the trustees are doing something else, I mean, kind of.
Now, I don't mean my comments about the DDA to be negative, I, I, that, that's their purpose.
But it's set up.
No, 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 I'm saying this, this is Kim Moore, I, I, I don't even know who's on it. I know they, you know, yeah, I don't really know what they do. I mean, I mean, I know they put signs out, maybe bus shelters out. And how do they, how do they interface with the development? I guess, how do they interface with the development? I mean, we're like smack dab in the middle of a nice, they're off here doing something different, something. Themselves, they're doing something.
Yeah, cause there is a.
Are there names different?
Yes.
And historically, they were established in part to build the boulevard, I mean, that was their goal, that was that.
First goal.
That's in their master plan.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay, all right, um. A PUD, okay, well, yeah.
A re-question. No, this has been really good for me, giving me ideas about.
Yeah, so, so the whole PUD really needs to reflect what the goals are for, for Jackson Road, the sewer district. Because doing something different that has different open space requirements or whatever.
They're in conflict if not careful.
They're in conflict if we don't work on them together. And there is some, some planners would say you don't even need a PUD if your zoning ordinance works well, um, but it, we've kind of talked about all those non-conforming issues and so forth, so. Anyway, um, so kind of do that in conjunction with the Jackson Road, so we're, don't get an ordinance ahead of where we wanna be. Cause if we need, what is it, a hundred-foot buffers for a PUD.
That's not dense.
That doesn't work with the form-based zoning that we're trying to promote.
Yeah, well, hopefully, like, like you said, Jesus, but hopefully we don't need a PUD. If we do the form-based or whatever we do on Jackson Road, hopefully you don't need to do a PUD. Hopefully we'll just follow whatever zoning is in place.
Right.
And then that also, the process is, is i- it, it's interesting, we've been having a, a discussion, and this is with Ann Arbor, about how you promote what you want, especially around sustainability, by also making sure the process, you do some process improvements at the same time that you do, you know, promotion of the sustainability.
What would be a process issue?
Uh, process improvement, well, one other thing San Arbor did, this is, um, residential, they did a, um, an expedited process for, uh, residential solar. So, I mean, there's basically a checkbox that you go through and it gets permitted, so it gets permitted almost like at the desk, um, basically. So, and they're, you know, trying to work on some other possible process improvements. But one of the things is, it does take longer for a PUD to work through than it does a, uh, by right zoning, and so if your zoning's working and doing what you want, you don't necessarily need the, the PUD, um, but then you, then you give up some of that discretion too. But it does make the, the process, process faster.
Did you write it correctly?
Yeah, um, okay, uh, reports, um. We have the BOT report.
Your board business?
You guys all got it, right? And you've already asked me all the questions you're gonna ask me about it, right?
Thanks for your report.
Yes.
You know you didn't call.
Yeah, call.
Call ahead of time.
Okay, um, okay, man, I need my. Len, Len, we'll just go through.
I gave you my last one, never got it back. So chief, that's my report, chief.
Oh, thanks.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, thanks, I didn't. Okay, um, OHM and C, Carly Wartman, any?
No, not, nothing, I, I, what I'm gonna start doing, um, uh, uh, township manager Parker has asked me to put together a detailed report of development activities for township port. And I've been doing that for a couple, two, three weeks now, um. And I've been doing that for a couple, two, three weeks now, um, and, and, um, I just thought of it now as we're going through reports. I should be getting you guys that same report because it lists on time that it's working out. We talk about transportation meetings. It's a very detailed report. I don't know if Commissioner Ariza, you've been getting that report or not, but.
What's that?
Have, have you been getting the plan, the planning report I've been doing for township?
Yeah, it was attached to the packet. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then, so we can have that in our packet too?
Yeah, I'll just start, I'll just start.
Yeah, great.
But it's in the trustee's packet, so pull it up from there.
Good, you could, but, you know, I.
Yeah.
You can do as well.
No, I think putting it in ours is a, is a good, good practice. Um, I mean, from a chair report, we're just, oh, I, I forgot. OHM, did you have anything you wanted to report? Um, have you started on the specs?
No, we have not yet received approval for working on that yet. Are you talking about the engineering standards?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still waiting to hear back from the board on moving forward.
Okay, is it, it, was the proposal more than what was in the budget?
I don't know, to be honest.
Do the trustees have to, they have to approve using budget funds for us, for?
Y- yeah, for allocation.
Yeah, I would think so. Do you need a sponsor or a?
Yeah.
Proposal or resolution?
We, yeah, cause we've been, we talked about updating, you know, the engineering specific, the standards and so forth because it's been, I don't know, ten years or something. And also, uh, also include some of the sustainability pieces in that, and we had budgeted for it. Um, I forget what budget was for it, but there was a budgeted line item for doing that. And so we'd like them to get going, and I think they gave you a kind of a detailed proposal for it.
So I'm gonna do a report, uh, to the, to the, um, board of trustees, and I'll do it tomorrow, and I'll email it to them, and I will include something in there. Can you follow up with me? You wanna email me or write it down now or exactly what you want the ask to be and when you want it to be, Jim?
Okay.
Is that okay?
For the allocation.
Yeah.
And if you do that in your report, it will, you know, you're not spoken, you don't read your report.
But I'm not. No.
They just read it.
No, no, they, yeah, right.
So what I'm getting at is it won't even be a point of discussion if you don't read it.
No, I'll include it in the, my report. So it won't even come talked about, right? But then I need to know which fund it's gonna come out of, which fund, you know, the details, like.
Yeah, I don't even know what fund it was put in other than it was, it might be a planning commission fund.
Does it come out of engineering? Does it come out of planning commission? Does it come out of, you know?
What I'm getting at, Dan, is it might not, might not get across to them by being in his report. Might be better to talk to Jessica. That's what I was thinking. Not, not to say that your report isn't gonna get read.
In his report and talk to Jessica.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thought I'm gonna.
It will, yeah. Um, yeah, I can forward the email that we got after they put the budget that included those things, so.
What are you laughing at?
Commissioner Ariza cracks me up. He sees the signs.
Okay.
Trying to wave my board.
Why you keep that aside?
Well, I said it on, I said it on the record.
Um, all right, uh, DDA hasn't met since I last reported. Zoning Board of Appeals. You know, it's been interesting, um, we've had several, uh, requests to, uh, people have decks and the decks can go into the rear property, uh, setback, but if you enclose them, they can't. And we've had just probably three now of requests that have been denied for that. And a lot of that is based on, yeah, um, you know, and, and what, what people don't understand is that it, or it, it's hard, they don't think of it, that the open space, for instance, they're saying, well, it doesn't impact anyone. So therefore, you know, I should be able to do it. Yet, you know, when you have dedicated open space, that has as much right, you know, as a, a neighbor, if you will, um, to maintain that open space and not impact that open space too.
You mean if everybody put their deck right up, gets a property line, there wouldn't be the open space that we otherwise enjoy?
Well, it's not the deck.
It, it, it's the enclosure of the deck.
The above the deck stuff.
Yeah.
The screen and the roof.
Right, exactly.
Blocking, it's a structure blocking.
Yeah, it, it becomes a structure, so it's, it's, it, but, so anyway, but you, we're supposed to be sensitive to when there are multiple requests for, um, I, I guess I'm reporting that we've had a, a series of those. And, you know, is there, is there discussion?
So the ord, does the ordinance meet our needs?
Our needs, or is that just something that, you know, it, you, you don't wanna impact the, the open space of that? So I'll, I'll just bring that up as, as a thought. Um, uh, broke, the Road Commission Advisory Committee.
We did not meet this month. Oh.
Jan?
Yeah.
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
A question on what you were saying.
Yes.
Um, what is the trigger that's built into the system that gets the ordinance looked at to see if?
Us. There is no trigger.
There isn't, I mean.
I mean, we don't really track, I mean, it's more of a sense of, there have been multiple.
Kind of variances.
Yeah, variances, or do you track those and say you need?
It's, the trigger is just we get a, a ton of them that keep getting approved. We should probably change our.
Would you say you've got a ton?
That get approved or get brought up or?
Well, they get brought up. Well, they don't get approved because, well, this ZDA won't approve anything that is unless there really is a hardship, an extenuating circumstance. I mean, it, it, the very few get approved and it, it's just, you know, just, I don't, it doesn't mean it's bad that we're denying all these.
Yeah, you're following the code.
It's just, uh, we're just, I'm just saying that there has been quite, quite a few of them coming on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Are you getting a ton?
Not a ton.
Okay.
We've had.
So I don't know what it, I know what a ton is in measurement, but I'm not sure what a, a bunch of, bunch of, bunch of cases that triggered, and that's your question is.
One a month, whatever other month.
Mm-hmm. We probably had one every other month. Of, of the, the enclosures, yeah. And I think a lot of it is, they assume a deck is there, therefore you can put a screen porch on a deck.
Now, here, here's an example of, I think, where Jenny was talking about. So typically, when you have a bunch of variances and the Zoning Board of Appeals isn't granting the same variance over and over and over again. You see this in communities have lake lots and people, they just keep doing the same thing over and over. Well, that, that shows there's a problem with your ordinance. And now the Zoning Board of Appeals is actually acting as legislators. They're actually, in, in effect, they're changing the ordinance by approving something that. And that shouldn't happen. The Zoning Board of Appeals shouldn't be acting in a manner that they're in effect changing ordinance and so forth. If you notice that, you should probably put that on the planning commission agenda and say, we should probably look at this ordinance because the Zoning Board of Appeals keeps granting the same one over and over and over. That's not necessarily happening for the granting, but they're, and to your point is there are certain circumstances that the Zoning Board of Appeals has a really hard time granting variances for. One is height, height variance. So the Zoning Board of Appeals just recently denied a height variance for a hotel, uh, on, on, with a graphic site. And height is something that we as a township, and if we're looking for density on Jackson Road, we may want to promote some additional height. But the Zoning Board of Appeals has very strict criteria they can look at. The height variance should almost never be granted because there's always an alternative. You can, the alternative is make the building smaller or lower. And so if height is something that the township wants to help promote growth and development and density, that's something that you may want to look at changing your ordinance because every height variance that goes to CBA really probably should be there because there's no practical difficulty. The Zoning Board of Appeals is supposed to make a determination of practical difficulty. So that's something that you should take.
Extenuating circumstances, yeah.
That's something that you should take on if that's what you want. Don't leave it up to the Zoning Board of Appeals to come through and grant height that it's not really permitting the ordinance. But there's certain things like that.
I would just throw out there, so for me, I mean, if I lived next to the person that wanted that and we're out, it's rural in the back there, I wouldn't want these big old blocks on each side. I don't care if it's twenty people. I mean, what are the, what would the, what are the residents around those neighborhoods? What are they thinking? You don't get that.
It's height in a certain area of the township.
No, 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 I'm talking about the screen in deck.
Oh, yeah.
If I were, I lived in a condo and somebody next to me wanted to block off my view of the.
But in these, in these incidences, the HOAs have approved them. Neighbors have been notified and have either come several times, have supported them.
Okay.
Okay, so it, it's one of those things, yeah. I mean, those are the circumstances. It isn't, I mean, we would, I mean, zoning, ZBA really does listen to neighbors because you're, you're talking variance, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah, but still haven't, even though people have supported it, HOAs approved it, ZBA said, no, because we don't have the extenuating circumstances, et cetera. So, anyway, um, all right, uh, land preservation commission. Anything on that one?
No, nothing to report. Um, on the land front, there was a meeting that's gonna be reported out tomorrow between the three township board reps and the three Dexter City reps. Kind of a meet and greet to talk about, um, Dave Luck's proposal that, uh, certain acreage be annexed to the city of Dexter, certain be sold to a nonprofit for, uh, to, to, to develop on it. Others have certain, um, parcels acreage be sold to the township, uh, and to be preserved. So that's, there's another meeting coming up on August, I believe, eleventh. Is that, or there's a, I have another meeting. We have a meeting on that Friday.
That's the eleventh.
And so I have a meeting on the tenth. And then till the next day, we're gonna be kind of taking that up again. But that's all there is to report, um, and that has to do with land preservation.
Okay, um, PPP.
Convicting Commissioner Ariza can help me. We discussed bids at our last PPP meeting. Um, you know, they were for the sidewalks of the ravines. Do you remember the parks we were discussing for the, the bids for parking lots in those?
Was it Marshall, yeah, there's the one, yeah. I think it's on Marshall Road and there's a park. And it's come to light that when we buy property, it's easier to buy it than it is to manage it, maintain it, develop it. You know, because we'll, we'll buy some property and say, oh, this would be great. We'll be able to put a trailhead here. And then the road commission says, well, not so fast. That's a hilly road. That's a curvy road. There's a lot of things. And then it comes to the, well, we gotta take out forty legacy trees to put a parking lot. We gotta take out forty trees so we can enjoy the rest of the trees. So, so that, there's a options choice associated with, with, that, do you do that or how best to do that? So they tabled, they, they tabled something to, to kind of.
It was the access.
Marshal Preserve, that's what we're talking about.
I think so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because of the site distances, the access and the trees that are at the site. So there, there's more issues than just.
They're gonna mark off too.
Yes, they do.
I know.
There's a lot of them.
But we're gonna, but, but, you know, that's gonna be a six-car.
Exactly.
Lot, two.
Yes, it's six spaces.
The problem is the road's faster now because it's a country road, and so how much time you're gonna.
So it's the site distance and the road.
So how, how, how fast, how much?
And it's really the only place to get access. It's one of the places to access that site.
Let me tell you, there ought to be a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on that.
What, what's this, what's the speed limit?
It's not marked, so guess what?
Fifty-five.
I know that from my old job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be because you can't go through that S-turn.
Well, that, I mean, it's a, it's a function of state law, right? So we don't have, we, 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 we.
We can't set the speed limit.
But the road commission.
The county can. So if there was a reason such as a parking lot being put in a public parking lot, maybe we could use that as our lever to get Marshall Road's speed limit down.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that question. I just know that the road commission tells you how much site distance they need given the speed limit that's currently there. Uh, so it's just something to think about.
And multiple legacy trees have been lost due to that.
Can we not just petition them to not do that?
And maybe give us a speed limit? Jeff, I don't know. I, 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 where I'm starting. That's a rack.
And we're gonna have to get it to.
Speed limits on real roads. You're on the speed limit committee.
You got it. I think you can request it from the road commission, and then they'll do a study and they'll tell you what it should be.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
Okay, okay. Kim River Watershed Council.
Okay, um, here in River Watershed Council, they're just trying to hire a, um, what do they call it? A government relations director. And I was kind of hoping, I was bringing this up so that the public could hear this, but they're probably not listening right now and it's too late. However, if anybody knew, anybody of, in this room knew somebody who would be a great government relations director, they're trying to coordinate between this, you know, their level and, and the state level. But really, they're trying to do it, they're trying to integrate all through that to get the right policies in place for preserving, you know, to help out with the watershed, which is our creeks, our rivers. And so it would benefit SIO if they had somebody who was in a position to, uh, advocate for local ordinances that, that helped the watershed. So, you know, that, I keep asking them if they have a set of guidelines that they would like to say, this is our best practice ordinance to do this particular function, and, um, they don't have that list. But if they, if they were statewide, you know, they could see what was going on in other communities and couldn't come up with the best practices. I'm still pushing for that. So, um, that's what I'm seeing, maybe coming out of their government, uh, relations director's position is somebody who would have that vision. So if anybody knew anybody who was in that type of work, forward it to the Watershed Council. They're looking to hire and they don't have a whole lot of people applying for it yet. Would help us know what I think.
So.
Before we move on, sorry, I just wanna go back to the previous note for the RAC. Does that coming from the LPC or the PPP?
PPP.
PPP wants lower speed limits on real roads?
Thank you. And I would, yeah, say that that would benefit multiple trees and access.
Lower speed limits?
Hmm. Lower the speed, the closer the trees can be to, uh, a development and access point, all of that.
And the closer it is to the roads, the slower, uh, people will drive without a slower speed limit? As you pointed out, in strong towns.
Yeah, anything from the fire services guidance, other than we all got our note, a public hearing notice, right, for the?
I, I thought that was a much better notice than the previous one. I mean, much more informative and the public can follow.
I like the little bullet points. Then, I thought that was really nice. All right, our, uh, the, we're renaming it, right? The Western Wasna Regional Advisory Group? That's a new name for that housing group.
Housing advisor.
Okay, Kim?
Yes, um, I'm new to the group and I went to the June, thank you, ma'am, cheer. Um, I went to a meeting on June sixth. It was my first meeting. They've been around for a while. Um, and they decided to change the name from the Wasna, Western Wasna Regional Housing Advisory Group because they deal with multiple issues. They deal with issues of housing, but also transportation. And we have, we've set up a calendar. Then, one of the meetings, we're gonna be dealing with mental health. Um, but, uh, there's people there from Dexter Township, me from SIO Township, um, as well as Wave. Um, and, um, just getting to know everybody, the, uh, the chair seems to be the mayor from Chelsea. His name I forget right now. It's weird. Okay, nevermind. Um, and, uh, so, um, Jan asked me to, if I would join it because initially they had a focus of housing, so. Right now, the big thing was the name change and getting down a calendar. Um, there was some discussion about the, the new, uh, affordable housing project that they have or not. Dan Holley, yeah, and. Dan Holley, yeah, and, uh, so they're having some, some issues with fire department runs to that place that are false, and that costing the, the city some bucks, and, uh, you know, maybe some people aren't a good fit, and rather not, you can evict or not evict, and so all of that is being, because there's, they have like, uh, Faith in Action, they're on this advisory committee too, but they're also the contract that does some of the social work within that development. But Avalon is also involved too, so, um, it was interesting to hear about some of the downsides of it. Especially since we're moving at, uh, affordable housing in our township, um, so. But that's all I have to report today.
Beauty, or, we're, we're, are we gonna talk about that or not?
Um, basically.
It was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda, um, I'm keeping it on the gen, the point was that it's, it needs to be tied in with our discussion on Jackson Recorder, because the only place where we are really doing density bonuses or proposing to do all those things is in the water, in the sewer district.
And then, 'cause I, I know that, uh, there are some on the board who are sitting like, well, how are we addressing affordability, housing affordability, or, you know, affordable housing, um? Do you, do you do that through density, or do you say, hey, developer, we need you to earmark certain apartments for AMI, or, you know, certain? Is it in our current ordinance now? Affordable housing, should it be? Does it go on PUD? How do you, how do you incorporate those concepts? And it's eleven o'clock, I'm gonna move to adjourn in two minutes, but, um,
Yeah.
I, I just throw that out there as a topic of discussion, it's something we need to be talking about. Considering, and I don't know the best way to do it, and at eleven o'clock at night, I'm not prepared to dive into it freshly.
Yeah, okay, it, um, yeah, that's a good, and.
It's in the PUD language.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna get it.
As a density bonus.
You need to live under the four days code, if that's what we do.
Well, I think this was specifically about the Goodrich PUD that just came before the board.
Yeah, but it's also bigger than that.
Yeah, it's come up before.
What's bigger than that? I'm sorry, I'm.
Affordable housing.
How, how you actually, yeah, and there are multiple articles out, out there, and I don't know if, if, if you can do this in Michigan, is require all developments to have a certain percentage at, at a certain AMI. Now, that is not, uh, depending on your, uh, definition of affordable housing, that's just kind of workforce housing, if you will, and then there's the whole supportive housing element, which is what they did at Dexter.
I don't think you could broadly across the board put in like ordinance that any PUD price, because you've ever, some committees might have a lower, you know, limited price level. I think you, you could make it incentives of PUD or something like that, but I don't think you could require a certain price point.
'Cause it was all, I didn't, I didn't run into anything in Michigan. It was Colorado, it was California, it was different, you know, states. It wasn't a Michigan thing.
I just think people could abuse it in the other direction.
Well, I mean, Michigan law prohibits local rent control. Anything that, any regulation that impacts the price of.
No, but you would just define affordability, so like with Wasna or Ann Arbor, we've been talking about, they have, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, eighty percent of the median.
Yeah, I agree.
So that would include, that would broaden it, not just poor or low-income people, but also, um.
But Ann Arbor has the luxury of having a housing commission, and they say in lieu of, they'll take money to this housing commission, and they'll actually house people through housing that's owned and run by the city. Uh, so.
Which we don't have that luxury.
Well, in this group, some of the conversation about housing is about teachers and police not being able to afford within the community that they work. So, and that's, so that's, that's why, um.
So I, 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 I think this warrants a broader discussion. Are we talking about renting? Are we talking about buying? I mean, are you homeowner occupied or tenants?
Sounds like we can only affect the buying portion of it, and hope that it uses word, but triples down to the rental, renting part of it. Right, we can't, you just said that we can't make any laws about the.
Price.
Of the rent.
No, but I think we can require that so many units be.
Yes.
Sixty percent, you know, that they, they go.
Especially with PUDs.
Yes, but, but, so there are things we can do, um.
Things that I've been.
If Goodrich is gonna have housing, it could be that a certain, you know, and then, then therein lies the rub, how many? Is it two units, or is it ten?
Two percent.
Or whatever, so, so.
Go ahead, Chris.
I, I would just say, I'm just, I could read it directly from the City of Ann Arbor code for proposed PUD projects exceeding the residential density recommendation of the master plan by up to twenty-five percent. The PUD project shall provide ten percent of the total dwelling units as affordable housing dwelling units, or fifteen percent when exceeding by more than twenty-five percent. When the master plan does not contain a residential density recommendation, and the proposed PUD project exceeds the floor area ratio of the underlying zoning by up to twenty-five percent, the proposed PUD project shall provide ten percent of the floor area as affordable housing dwelling units, or fifteen percent when exceeding by more than twenty-five percent. And then, as Commissioner Reiser said, then we can get into, because typically, nobody ever provides at the City of Ann Arbor. They, they, they pay the fee in lieu, and I will tell you it's in the millions of dollars, and they pay it. They will pay that fee in lieu.
So the developer pays the fee.
Yeah, so that, that's.
And I see it in the millions of dollars, and they're fully gonna pay it.
So that standard is not created for.
No.
Well, it goes into our, our housing commission, which then takes those millions of dollars, or hundreds of thousands in some cases, but these high rises that are going, there's no affordable housing in most of them out there, they'll pay it in lieu, so. Not in the housing commission, that, I, I'm not as versed in as, as in what they're doing with that money to, to help with the affordable housing.
Well, they, they have, they're building some pretty substantial projects right now.
Avalon is building?
No, Ann Arbor Housing Commission, because the Catherine, and there's another one down.
There's one, um, Plant Row, right there by the, the county.
And then they're rebuilding some of their so, other sites that are, that have had, that are.
There's a com, a large complex way out Traver, I mean, big complex.
Oh, that's Arrowood.
No, 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 we're talking Nixon, I'm sorry, Nixon, way out Nixon.
North?
Park, like Townhouse Apartments, I've had clients that are placed there.
Pontiac Trail, Nixon, that way.
Yes, yes.
As an approach to Deva.
No, Deva, Deva.
Pontiac Trail.
Deva, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but there's no, I don't think there's any affordable housing up there.
Okay.
None of those units were affordable. I don't think it's a PUD.
You might be thinking of, of Pontiac Trail and.
Deva, Pontiac Trail and Deva.
Where.
Okay, there's Arrowood, is there another one out there? No, I'm not talking about Arrowood, that's all.
That's an odd one, but there's a new one, there's a new one. Well, anyway, i- in any event, it, I think what that gets to is it's gotta be intentional, that.
Do you wanna exceed the residential zoning, ten percent or fifteen percent of the?
So, John? The answer is, it's almost impossible to.
It's gonna be a full housing, it's defined by the county.
To force affordable housing.
Hmm?
It's almost impossible to force a developer to build affordable housing.
So perhaps what we need to do is talk to the developers that are doing affordable housing, and ask them what, 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 what criteria and how they do it, and how you make it, you facilitate it.
Best practices for that, yeah.
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
At the chair.
We have minutes, and then we can do that.
Would you entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July tenth of twenty twenty-three?
I will.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Moore, uh, seconded by Commissioner Human, um, were there any, I, excuse me, I thought there were good minutes.
Yeah.
Any other, okay, roll call vote, please? Oh, I'm sorry, we can just do that voice, but, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, the.
Second the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Who moved?
Reiser.
Reiser.
Reamively.
Okay, and, and it's supported by Hyde. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
We say eleven oh eight.
Yeah, eleven oh six.
I'm going to say something like, I'm gonna invite them, no, I'm gonna say.
Write it on the record, or?
Record.
You're gonna say something more, you just.
No, 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 in my, in my report, I'm gonna say, PC and OHM discussed, the, usually discuss how the engineering standards need to be updated, as they're about ten years out of date, look for a BOT agenda item on this in the near future. It's gonna be that short, is that okay? Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay.